Ready? Call to order, Board of Education meeting, June 10th, 2021, 6:00. John, take attendance. I don't see where I didn't get any cards for public comment. So now we're going to go to special recognition introduction to 2021-22 Board Interns and Advisory Council. I'm going to pass it over to our Chair of that Committee, Michelle Southward.
Thank you, President Colan. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. I just wanted to take the time out to thank our students, our 11th and 12th graders that will be entering into the fall semester as 11th and 12th graders, to thank them for entrusting us with their time. I think it's, it needs to be applauded, and so I thank each and every one of you for knowing that the time that you're going to give us as Board Interns and serve on the Advising Council, we are looking forward to your leadership growth and development and all that you have to contribute to our group. And so with that being said, I know that there are guests that are with you, either it be a guardian or someone that's special that you brought with you today, even if it is a classmate, we want to make sure that you know that we, we honor and we're grateful that you have selected us to journey with you through your 12th and 11th grade year next year. And so as a Chair, of course, we could have not done this without a very group, a group of very important individuals. So I would like to take the time to thank Trustee Baron and Trustee Van Gimmert for their time and efforts on this committee, as well as our Superintendent Pat Watson. And so we know that what Pat does and all of his daily activities interacting with students, it definitely leads the district, and I think he's just stellar as a professional. And so we're so excited for the opportunity for you to work with Superintendent Watson more directly. Last but not least, I think that she is a leader beyond my imagination. Rebecca, who is our Board Assistant and Pat's, I think she's Pat's assistant, I don't know really what Rebecca does because she serves everyone and helps everyone, but we really want to make sure we also acknowledge all the phone calls that you receive from Rebecca and all the communications that you receive from Rebecca. We know that she is definitely always thinking of the students, and so we thank you, Rebecca. And so to pass on the torch from transitioning from our students this year, I would like to pass it back to our Board President, who will acknowledge our Board Interns and our Advisory Council who are present and both on the line. So thank you again, and congratulations, and you and your efforts should be applauded. Thank you, President Colan.
Thanks, Michelle. Thank you very much again for the Committee, and I know it's a significant amount of work. And now, you know, I'm going to announce our Advisory Council and Board Interns, and thank you. We know this is a very, very selective process. As we kept hearing, the members of the Board who weren't on the Committee, how impressed everyone was with, you know, all of you, you know, for, you know, the applications, the essay, the interview, as me and Superintendent Watson, we always joke around and say, all of, well, at least two of us, maybe not all of us, will be probably working for all of you someday. So congratulations. With that, our Advisory Council unable to attend, Janiki Rad, here, Christian? I try, I try every time I announce her name, but Janiki is unable to attend. Virtual is Erin Williams. And then, oh, there's Erin, okay. There's Erin, hey Erin. Erin's live, okay. And we have Andrew Zupansik, Natalie Simone, Kennedy Stafford, Ali Alum, Lena Jindali, and I believe Lena, you have a few words to say, and then Heather Chen. So whoever has a few words, Lena, you want to come up first?
I'll first.
Oh, well. Or anyone who wants to come up and say something. I know Lena and Heather had some prepared statements. You guys can decide. It's your first order of business as a group.
Good evening. My name is Lena Jindali, and I'm a rising senior here at Bloomfield Hills High School. I came to this district in 2013 as a small, wide-eyed fourth grader, and now I'm here standing in front of the Board of Education, so honored to be serving on the, as the Board Intern alongside Heather next year. I served on the Board Intern Advisory Council last year, and it was an incredibly enriching experience. I grew as a leader, developed as a communicator, but most importantly, the Council and I served as advocates for our peers, the Bloomfield students. There is still more work to be done, and I am so honored to assist in completing it. Between a new COVID, new classrooms, new schedules, and a new normal, we all bore lots of challenges last year. And although they may have caught us unprepared, as a team and community, we met these challenges resolutely. So I am beyond excited to work alongside the Board of Education, our administration, and the Advisory Council to assist in a strong comeback and bridge the gaps between the student body and district leaders. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Chen, and I'm a rising senior at Bloomfield Hills High School. As a student who has been in this school district since the age of two, I am truly honored to serve as the School Board Intern alongside my friend Lena Jindali. Last year, as a member of the Board Student Advisory Council, I was able to represent students throughout the pandemic. My experience has allowed me to see where the Student Advisory Council and the Student Intern programs can continue to grow and better help our students. Like much of this last year, transitioning into the next school year will be challenging, but I am excited to work alongside my peers and the Board of Education to serve this community at every level, from our elementary schools, to Bowers Farm, to Wing Lake, to our middle schools, and to our high school. My hope is that together, we can continue to make our school district a leader in education that cares for its students and prepares them for the modern social climate that we are in. Thank you.
Before we take a break, does anyone else want to come up?
All right, good evening. My name is Ali Alum. I am a rising senior at BHHS. Folks who know me, and I'm sure the Board members who interviewed me, I'm sure you're able to tell that I have really strong views about our schooling system here in the U.S. And while I'm certainly going to be able to push some of those views through this position on the Advisory Committee, that's ultimately not why I decided to apply. I decided to apply because of a particular, particular one of those views, that students ought to have a seat at the table. And through this position, I hope to bring the voices of the student body to the Board of Education in order to build a more inclusive, a more diverse, and a more sustainable district which values all of us. And so thank you to Mr. Watson, Mr. Colan, Trustee Southward, and everybody who helped us in starting this, this position. So thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Hi. Hi, my name is Natalie Simone. I am a rising junior at Bloomfield Hills High School, and I think, you know, Ali said it, I think everyone on this, everyone who applied for these positions really just cares about, you know, the students at our school, and that's something that's really important to me. I really enjoy, you know, coming to school in the morning and, and talking to people and looking at how we can improve our schools. And I am an active member of the Junior State of America chapter at our school and in our state. And through that, I've talked to a lot of students from not only, you know, around our school, but also around the Midwest. And I think a lot of that has, you know, brought me to a point where I have, you know, these ideas about ways we can, you know, improve our school district. And I think that I am really, really excited for the coming year because hopefully with the help of, you know, the rest of the Advisory Board and the awesome interns, we can, you know, start to make a change in the district. And as, you know, I'm just kind of saying what Ali said, I guess, you know, it's really amazing that students get to have a seat at the table. So thank you so much, and I'm really, really excited for this opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kennedy Stafford, and I'm a rising senior at Bloomfield Hills High School. And I just want to say that I'm really excited to be working with both the student body and the Board in just, in order to create relationships between all of us, and then also just be able to, what's the right word, but just be able to continue to improve our schools and just to continue to help the students figure out what they, what is best for them, what is best for them in our schools, and just how us as student interns can help them. So I'm just very excited to be working with everyone, and thank you for this opportunity.
I'm Andrew Zupansik, and I just want to thank you all for this amazing opportunity to represent my fellow students and peers within this Board. I'm just so excited to work with all of you for the upcoming year, to look forward to a hopeful return to normalcy after this very difficult year for all of us. So again, thank you so much, and thank you for allowing us students to have a voice within all these important topics within our district. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Williams, and I am a rising senior at the International Academy. And I can just say, based on my experience from last year, this is going to be such an amazing time working with all of my peers and, of course, Mr. Watson. And I am just so excited to see what we can do this year. I know last year, our options were quite limited for obvious reasons, and so seeing that everyone is going back in person next year and that school will be changing to this new sense of normal, I'm just so excited to see what we can do for all of the students within the district. Thank you.
Okay, right now, I'm going to call for a temporary adjournment in the meeting so we can go out and take some pictures, and then we will resume. What time is it now?
6:17.
6:17, we'll resume at 6:35? 10 minutes?
Sure.
All right, I'm going to reconvene the meeting. We are at study session 4A COVID-19 update. Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, President Colan. If we could bring up the slides, please. Great, thank you. So the vaccine rate, as we know, we got off to a great start in the state of Michigan. Recently, the vaccination rate per day has kind of slowed down, but we are getting closer to closer to the next threshold, which is that 60%. Next slide, please. The weekly COVID-19 report from Oakland County Health Division shows a decrease in cases of 391 compared to the last report. Also, age groups, each age group is showing declining. Healthcare capacity is at 40% to 50% with low COVID numbers. The two areas that are still in red are the 14-day death count and the percent that are actually hospitalized. Next slide, please. So you can see that the COVID cases per day are continuing to drop. We're well under 100 per day, and if you look at the chart bottom left, we're approaching the numbers that we haven't seen since last summer. Next slide, please. Again, in line with all the trends we're seeing throughout the state of Michigan, Oakland County Health and the Health Department are seeing the same thing statewide, the hospitalization trends. All data points continue to trend down. This includes patients that are not in critical care, patients that are on ventilators, and critical patients. Next slide. Seven-day average in the United States for COVID cases right now is 14,349. As we know, back in the winter, we peaked at 200, a little over 250,000 cases per day. There is a variant of concern, which is the Delta variant, which is the B1617.2. It's the variant that is strong in India right now and in parts of the U.K. That's something that to keep an eye on, but overall, to have these numbers, they're extremely positive. And this is about a 35% decrease compared to the last report. Next slide, please. So as you can see, when you look at new cases per 100,000, we've been in yellow for 23 days. We're actually approaching green. To get to green, that means there's less than one case per 100,000. So the fact that we're actually there, I want to remind everyone where we were in August, and I gave a report about COVID and where we would be during the school year based on the best-known data, and shared with the community that the odds of us being in green in both categories at the same time this school year was probably impossible. And that was all the feedback that I had received from doctors, and especially the virologists and epidemiologists. The fact that we're actually this close to being green in both categories in Oakland County is literally monumental. If you look at percent positive, we're in the green there, which is less than 5% positivity. We've been there five days. And remember, this data is about a four-to-five-day lag as well. So all in all, all the trends are extremely positive with our COVID numbers. Next slide, please. I'll turn it back over to you, to President, you to President Colan.
Just want to see if Michelle has any questions, and then my colleagues that are here. Michelle, any questions or comments? Anyone here?
No.
I just want to make a statement, looking at having percent positivity at 1.9%, you know, who could have thunk, you know, six months ago, we would have been anywhere near that?
Right.
And I, I was on the last call the school year with the Health Department last night. So Oakland County is 65-ish percent vaccinated, and their goal is to get 70% by July 4th. So they are pushing for that. I guess new vaccinations have slowed down, but they're, they're really pushing hard. It's like same-day basis, walk-in clinics all over the county. This Saturday at our high school, I don't know if it's second dose only, because they had one three weeks ago. Is it second dose only?
No, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure if it is.
Okay, but there is, if anybody is at home watching 12 and up Pfizer vaccine at our, at our high school this Saturday morning.
Okay, with that, we will go to 4B Budget Update. Tina? There she is.
So I have my volume up, and I'm not hearing you very well. Are we ready to start?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you not hear me? Tina, we're ready for you. Yep.
Okay, wonderful. I'm unmuted and video's on. Do we have the slides, or am I presenting those, Sean?
I think Beth is going to present those in just a moment, Tina.
Okay, wonderful. Hopefully, you're not hearing the air conditioning noise that decided to start exactly now.
No, we're not hearing it, Tina.
Okay, good.
Wish we had air conditioning, but we're not hearing it.
Okay. All right, so tonight, I am presenting the final budget for the general fund for this year. We, we know this past year has been challenging all the way around in many ways, and finance has impacted as well. Thankfully, compared to a year ago, especially for those of you that weren't part of the budget update, when we were expecting significant per pupil reductions, just not knowing what would happen, that thankfully did not occur. So we are seeing some of the federal money being passed down, as well as some of the state portions of that federal money being passed down to the district. So without further ado, next slide, please. So we're going to go over this year's final budget projection. I will have a crosswalk of what changed since the mid-year approval of the budget, and then next year's original budget development. I will give you a preview of some of the assumptions we're using. As recent as yesterday, I was in many different meetings, just trying our best to get a handle with MDE and the Michigan School Business Officials, looking at what various districts are using as far as assumptions for next year. I will say I am being cautiously optimistic. And then just a brief International Academy update. Next slide, please. So for the general fund, next slide. So the, the three columns here represent the general fund budgets that have occurred throughout the year. We also did a special December amendment, and I don't include that on here, we typically don't do it. We're actually considering recommending that each year, just to update our enrollment. But the original budget, the very first column, we were actually looking at the $2,084 of a loss, basically spending over revenue, which would have brought our fund balance down, still within board policy, but a year ago, like I said, there were significant reductions that were expected based on the state's budget. The mid-year budget turned around. We started to see some of the money come in, and the reduction that did occur was much smaller than we expected. And so we were about break even in the middle column of about $232,000. And then the preliminary budget that we have, and some of this, I believe I shared in the weekly, we are looking at a positive of $2.7 million this year in the third column, which brings our fund balances a percent of expenditures to 24.5%. And I will hold comments until the next two slides, please. Next one. The crosswalk starts with the mid-year budget of about $232,000 of revenue over expenditures, and then going through what led to the improvement to get to $2.7 million. A largest part of the story is the ESSAR equalization, and this is the ESSAR II equalization. So I know in, in the Subcommittee of Finance, Facilities, and Legal Affairs, I went through the various COVID funding we've received and the breakdown of the spending that's occurred so far. And one of those buckets is an equalization. This is actually the state using their money to bring districts up to at least that $450 per pupil if they didn't naturally receive that from the federal ESSAR II, because it was allocated based on a Title I formula, which really steers monies towards at-risk and, and poverty and those types of districts. So there are many districts like Bloomfield that were receiving much less. Ours, in this case, it was about $86 per pupil. So this equalization payment came in. And what's different about this payment is oftentimes with grants, in order to receive the money, you actually have to spend the money first, and then you're reimbursed. But because this came through the state as an allocation of an equalization payment, we were able to receive the money this year, and it's recognized as revenue, even though that is earmarked towards the things we are doing next year. And I'll, I'll mention that, and there will be more on that as we share the new budget at the next meeting. The next item that's large is the federal part of ESSAR II. That wasn't allocated or appropriated in time for the mid-year budget. So that $475,000 that came in, that's the $86 per pupil that I mentioned, that was actually put towards the tech purchases during this past year. Some of you may recall, there's a footnote on here, in June of 20, when we didn't know what we were going to do, but we knew our students had to learn. The Board of Education approved spending up to $1.2 million for tech needs funded by center program reserves. We were fortunate to be able to earmark reserves for that. But it was also indicated that any federal and state funding that came our way, we would be offsetting that, those monies and not using center program reserves. So this ESSAR II money went towards those tech devices. And the, the remaining transfer is what is the $440,000, the next line, because we do our device spending out of a separate fund, capital equipment fund. Next slide, please. FEMA, FEMA is something that's been challenging during this year, and I actually have some fighting finance members that would not give up, and every time they gave us another hoop to jump through, we were meeting those hoops. So we are now optimistic that we will be getting a higher percent coverage for the PPE expenditures that we had over the past year-plus. So that $100,000 is additional monies we expect to get in, in time for all the accounting rules that we can recognize it this year. And then we have a large amount of a reduction in cost. So now that the dust is settling, and we're looking at this year, and clearly, we had a lot of learning from home remotely, as well as hybrid learning. So there were savings over and above what we conservatively estimated back at mid-year in the utility area with gas, electric, and water, and also for the buses, fuel, oil, grease, et cetera, about $400,000. So that added to the bottom line. And then we had extra spending in contracted services, a lot of that were the custodial needs that we needed for additional cleaning, et cetera. And that brings us to the $2.7 million. So I just want to pause for a minute to see if there are any questions on what changed to bring us from mid-year now. Any questions?
I'm looking around. Jennifer?
Yeah. Hi, Tina, thank you. I don't, I don't have a question about what changed, I'm just curious as to, from the start of COVID until now, how much money has our district in total received from county, state, and, and federal, directly related to the extra ESSAR COVID money?
So in total, what I had shared, and I think there was a link in one of the, the updates, about with all of the pots of money, which includes three pots of ESSAR money so far, as well as some local money from the county, we have coronavirus relief funds that were allocated to us. I'm just quickly going through some of that. But then some of this money is not in yet. So with the money that we expect in the summer, per pupil for summer programs, et cetera, the last presentation I did is about $7 million. And that is not just this year, it's whatever was last year, this year, and what's still going to come in next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nothing, not Michelle, no one? Okay, with that, thank you very much, Tina. Thanks for the update.
Oh, not done yet.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Paul, you know me.
I tried, I tried my best.
So for next year's original budget development, next slide, please. Thanks, Beth. So the property tax millage rates are a very key part of the opening budget for next year, and a public hearing is required, which will take place on June 24th. It's required to be earlier in the agenda, and the property tax rates are part of it. Here, some of the terminology has changed over the years, and so I just want to keep us up to date. The non-primary residence exemption property, which is a mouthful, would have been long ago non-homestead. And then the primary residence exemption property is, was referred to as homestead. That's our hold harmless millage rate of 6.3028. Here in Bloomfield, we do lobby half of the millage rates in the summer, so I was required to present those, and the Board approved me doing so at the last meeting, and I'm presenting them to you here, but they'll also be part of the public hearing. Taxable values continue to go up, and we are capped at how much in that second line, the 6.3028. That's actually a calculation backed into because we receive about $4,000 per pupil from our residents who have graciously approved our operating millages every time that we've gone to the voters for that. So we're, we're very thankful for that. And because taxable values have gone up, the rate has gone down, but a big part of that is enrollment, since it's about $4,000 per, and our enrollment did go did go down. And now that we're not going to be under this super blend next year, that also reflects an enrollment decline that's projected. Then, in September, I updated for the latest enrollment we know, as well as taxable values. And the second half is lobbied for December 1's tax bills that all of you received. The last line on here is debt service and sinking fund. The debt service, 2.75. This is the first public hearing where we have the new bond included. This was in the ballot language as the maximum combined debt millage rate for the high school, as well as the new bond. So, that is 2.75. And then, the sinking fund, which was approved at a higher rate a few years ago as a replacement, is subject to headly rollback. And headly rollback basically caps the amount we can collect year over year to inflation. And if we were to collect more than an inflationary increase, we are required to roll back the rate. So, this happens quite regularly for our sinking fund. That does not apply to debt service. Debt service is what's needed to pay the principal and the interest. But it is applied to whatever was authorized for our operating millages. So, we will be discussing more about that as I've updated the board in the weekly as we get to fall, and we start looking at the millages that'll be coming due, and what's expiring, and what we need to do. Next slide. For general fund assumptions, there are two slides on this, and I won't read all of it to you. But key for revenue, of course, is enrollment and foundation allowance per pupil. And so, this year, I am considering everything. Our student services person that I've met with and talked to about how our kindergarten enrollments are looking, that's part of my cautious optimism. Looking at the fall of '19, remember, that was a normal fall, normal year. We were at a really good enrollment number, actually pretty high over the years. But then, a fall in 2020, with a COVID year, we dropped. So, taking an average of that, being a little cautiously optimistic, I'm projecting a blended membership, this is full-time equivalents, this is how we're funded, by 5460, which is a decrease from this year's enrollment calculation of 5511, decrease of about 51 FTEs. So, when you say about 12, we still seem to use 12,000 as our rounded number per pupil, that's about a $600,000 decrease in revenue. And it does really remain to be seen. We know, we plan to come back in person. All of us can't repeat that enough, and we shall see where the number lands. That's a bigger unknown this year than it typically is. But that super blend really helped us, because we were down about 160 FTEs if the state did not implement a super blend calculation. Foundation allowance per pupil, many of us have seen and watched from the initial governor's budget, then the House, then the Senate, and then the latest governors, now that she's back at the budget table, what she is proposing for foundation. So, I'm using the word cautiously optimistic, that's my term this year, and to be determined. And I didn't get out a dartboard yet, and I know I'm joking around a little bit, but at least it's looking far different than it was a year ago when we were looking at reductions. State categorical funding will be a big part of it, too, because we know that a lot of the remaining money, including the federal American Recovery money, is all embroiled right now in the budget discussions and the consensus talks to reach a budget, which right now, my colleagues and MSBO and the folks we talked to at MDE, Michigan Department of Education, were not optimistic at all that we're going to see a final budget by July 1. Next slide. Local revenue. Now, we really are looking back two years and trying to return more to normal. We did have local revenue decreases, of course. We didn't have as many facility rentals, we certainly didn't have as much programming, preschool, just a lot that we did with providing grace, understanding, and just caring for each other, our students, and our community. So, now hopefully, we'll be returning a little more to normal with that, but I'm not sure we'll be back to where we were pre-COVID with local revenue levels. On the spending side, this is the last part of the assumptions. As we know, bargaining agreements more than normal are happening right now, and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources has updated you on that. So, I have the latest estimates just based on where we're at in bargaining, and I'll be using those before anything is approved or ratified, because we need to have a budget approved and adopted before July 1. Other than that, any questions on the assumptions or next year's development so far?
I had one question from a prior slide. If that's all right?
Sure, Howard.
When you talked about the millage rates, Tina, and you talked about on the sinking fund, there you go, that the 7.036 has been headly reduced. From our standpoint, from the district standpoint, that took down our potential revenue that we could use for sinking fund projects. There is an option of doing what's called a headly rollback, but we'd need to go to the voters for that. But as an alternative, as I think the sinking fund goes through '23?
Yes, December '23.
Okay. So, as we consider what millage rate we go out to the taxpayers for, for that vote of theirs in '22 or '23, whenever we do that, we want to very seriously think about what the original rate was and whether we do want to get it back, return it back, you know, pre-headly reduction, so that we can have the kind of funds we might need to keep the district current in terms of all our capital investments.
Howard, thank you for making that point. That is an excellent point. The last approved rate, because we kept it the same, was .7165. But before that, the millage rate was .74, and the first millage rate was actually 1.5. So, the facility and the capital needs assessment, which includes technology, is something that will be part of our conversations this fall to inform the how much and what the needs are in the long term. And at the same time, all of the dates, you know, we're limited on the dates that we can go to our voters. So, I look forward to discussing that with you. That was a great point. And when you mentioned headly rollback, there is a headly restoration option, sometimes it's called a headly override. And so, that is something we need to look at for our general operating millage as well.
And that's what I meant, a headly override. Let me ask you, Tina, not to get into the weeds too much at all, but I know when we go for the 18 mil, we ask for like 19 or 20, but we only charge 18. Do we have that option also with the sinking fund? Can we actually go out for a higher rate but actually not charge that amount? And therefore anticipate, you know, the headly impact?
Yeah. I actually have an email string with an attorney, our ballot attorney, on that, and I think the answer I received is nobody's done it, but I didn't get a no. So, I will definitely look into that again, Howard. I would love to do that. And yes, we did go for 20 mils on the operating piece before, and now I continuously monitor and project, and to the extent all of our property will continue to go up, I do believe we were going to need the headly restoration.
Yeah. Thank you. This is a conversation for the next year or so.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Back one. Yep. So, this is just the board policy. I like to include it in the slides around this time of year, anytime I do the budget, just so the community knows, the Board of Education does have a policy around the fund balance targets. And there are a lot more things that go into planning and developing the budget, including the strategic plan and the goals and the different things we need to accomplish. But I'm just sharing this here for you. Next slide. So, the next steps for the board meeting in two weeks, obviously finalizing the detailed budget package. The goal is to have that to the board in your packets by the end of next week, as well as the original budget detail for the general fund and the special revenue funds. This will include a crosswalk. And given just the unusual activity financially that we've had to deal with, there was a lot happening on the revenue side, more federal funding, more state, a lot of different things happening on the spending side. So, we will do our best to provide more detailed crosswalk, perhaps just on the spending, especially as we go into the development of next year's budget. And I mentioned that 2 million that we were allowed to receive, but a lot of that will be paying for the spending that's happening in the summer and the social workers that are being added, et cetera. So, we're working hard over the next week to show you the best trail that we can. The multi-year forecast is being prepared, and there'll be a lot of estimates in it. And I will just emphasize, as we look at it every year, that we focus on the next one to two years as best as we can. And the last couple of years is just tough, because conservatively, I really can't count on the legislature or the federal government to provide additional money every year. But I do know we have people, as long as we have students. And so, the spending is pretty consistent, and we can estimate that, but the revenue doesn't look as good. And so, those out years typically definitely don't show any surpluses. And I have some old ones where we're in pretty good shape compared to about three years ago when I showed you a forecast, and we're in much better shape than those out years three years ago. And that is it. Any other questions?
One second. Michelle? Anyone? Howard?
Tina, I want to look at the third bullet point. You know that I always love that first part in terms of the crosswalk, so I really look forward to that every year to see that. But that second parenthetical phrase, talking about the spending aligned with goals in collaboration with LST, props to the superintendent, to Mr. Bidlak, and to you for doing that. This is an excellent, excellent thing, and I think that will be very beneficial to the board and the community for us all going forward. So, thank you, thank you. I look forward to seeing that in a couple of weeks.
Good. We will do our best. We know we need to show where some of the additional monies are going.
Well, it's just not the additional money. It's all 90 or 100 million dollars that we spend every year.
Thanks, Tina. Thank you for the presentation. With that, we will go to 4C, My KIP overview.
I think the PowerPoint was going to be pulled up on the screen. Thank you. You can go ahead to the next slide. So, good evening. Carrie and I were invited to give updates on where we are at as we transition into the My KIP, the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process out of MDE. Tonight is really a culmination of many months of work. Carrie and I have been working along with what we can, from the MDE learning, we've been a part of any My KIP professional learning, whether it be in our county or in statewide collaboratives. And we've also been reaching out to districts who are also pilot districts or districts just in all their process. So, everybody's been leaning in together as a state as we transition into My KIP and learning from each other. You can go ahead. This is actually a conceptual slide that we've been coming across inside the professional learning that we've been sitting in, whether it be MDE or through ISDs. And it really is this conceptual of what is the past and going into the present. And so, in the top data box, you really see where systems were really, by building, by building, school improvement. But as a system, they weren't very cohesive in that data. And so, by tying all the pieces together, we become streamlined and efficient and much more targeted in our continuous improvement. Next slide. So, this is one of the slides that really sort of outlines some big shifts in thinking around My KIP and the way that MDE is really trying to structure and provide districts with a streamlined and integrated process and platform. So, there's really three big ideas and shifts that they're trying to make. So, one is around this idea of continuous improvement, and that districts have smaller cycles of improvement throughout the year within a larger cycle compared to previous work. Districts are really working to ensure that systems are in place to address all the changes that they're asking for within systems, and really trying to leverage this idea of the whole child and how that fits in with your improvement work. The platform that they have outlined for us itself will be in place where we have a chance to record district and systems thinking around our data and the whole child. And then, the idea of this systems thinking, where you see these multiple gears working together, are really, they're interdependent, but then also a way to align our processes and people working together toward a common goal. And that's the idea behind these three big ideas. It's about how departments or the different gears work together as one, how we engage our system in carrying out our purpose, how we respond to each other with feedback, and then also the ideas that it includes a broader range of stakeholders. Next slide. So, we think about that first circle around continuous improvement cycles. The idea is that our schools, who used to work individually on their school improvement plans, now become part of a bigger district plan within the system. And our former process of gather, study, plan, do, that was in Advanced Ed, is no longer there. They have this new continuous improvement cycle, which you see outlined on this slide. And the idea is that it's also going to give us more time to actually analyze our data rather than spending time gathering up the data. And eventually, we'll be able to populate everything within this platform that they've set up for us, and we'll have all of our data in one spot as we look at it and focus on our continuous improvement, the whole child, and look at evidence-based practices and have alignment across our system. These new processes and structures that are being put in place are supposed to give districts time savings in what they do and a greater focus on outcomes. Next slide. So, as Susan mentioned, we have been partnering with other districts. We've been looking at multiple resources through the MDE website. They've been posting weekly updates with resources on their website. We've been engaged in listservs about My KIP, trying to learn everything we possibly can. And one of the many resources that we came across was this wonderful month-by-month, step-by-step guide. And so, as we were studying the way that we move our system and building capacity around processes and structures and mindset shifts with My KIP, as well as how our building teams will be structured, we really honed in on this competency section that you see outlined in month one as we were starting to figure out our teams within our system, really building that capacity. So, if we move to the next slide, we also here focused in on that competency section that you see outlined in month two, and focused on launching and building our core My KIP teams. We used another resource from MDE along with this, where they outlined who should be part of those different teams, and really trying to build that understanding within the team members, building trust, getting comfortable with one another so that we can share and having time and space to really focus and look at our data and the whole child model. So, we've been focusing on building that with our core My KIP team. We did have a core My KIP team launched last month, and we'll get into a little bit more about that in just a little bit. But going back to this whole child and building a mindset around that, that's a huge undertaking for people to understand. And so, really, when MDE pulled this in, this started in 1987 with noted health experts Diane Allensworth and Lloyd Colby. They introduced this idea that a coordinated school health model, and the idea that health is necessary for the foundation in a student's learning and a foundation that should be found in effective schools. In 2011, the ASCD, the Association for Supervision Curriculum and Development, published this healthy school communities model that led to a shift in thinking about what does whole child mean? What does it mean when you're looking at within the school system, and how does it impact our students? And how health should be viewed? And shortly after that, they came out with this whole child model that we're going to talk a little bit about, coming up in a few slides. Next slide. So, the next series of slides actually comes out of the My KIP statewide collaborative. This has been happening, hosted from the west side of the state, but actually, it has included districts from all over Michigan, as well as the ISDs. So, the learners are both ISDs and districts at the same time in helping with the rollout. And why I wanted to share this was that it really is showing where everybody is feeling there's somewhere on this continuum. And so, the far left is not where we see ourselves as a system, but we also know that we're working to the far right side. And if you really look at the descriptor... And if you really look at the descriptors, how much of that is the human capacity of collaboration and the infrastructures of this work? So, a lot of the work around going into My KIP is about districts building those infrastructures that might not have existed before, not just being able to be inside of this platform called My KIP, but all those inner-working infrastructures that need to make a cohesive system. The next conceptual, next slide. This is what they're really talking about was the old way, and I don't think it was what MDE wanted to have happen in the behaviors of school improvement, but it is what happened. And that is state assessment data was really the king, and that was what drove the goal-making. And it really flowed down more where the district plan was really kind of near the bottom. And what's really important in this graphic is seeing the left arrow in that linear so you don't see this cyclical process of continuous improvement. So, if you go to the next slide, you'll notice that on the left, there is that cycle where you're going through the continuous process. But really look at the top, and this goes back to what Carrie was talking about, this shift of what data we are really bringing to the table to set our lens for where are we focusing our goals and our strategies. So, you notice that it's not just achievement. It is this attention to the whole child, the whole school, the whole community data. And that district is sitting right below that with the buildings and everything wrapped together. Next slide. This is one last artifact I wanted to share with all of you that again was from, I think, the Ottawa ISD on the west side. What has been something that we've been finding as we talk to different districts, not just districts who were in the piloting or the beta testing, we should say, of the My KIP platform, but other districts that are coming into this. We are able to do it on paper this year if we so choose. And what we're hearing from the people who are in the My KIP system, everybody's coming up against glitches. They're not always the same glitches, but there's some, there's not been one clean run-through that we've talked to with people. And it's actually been slowing down and making the process very difficult. So, this is a document that takes the process, and this is just a screenshot that gives you just the top part. But what's nice about what Ottawa did is they then linked it to the screenshot within the platform. So, as people are working through that process on paper, they're starting to see, so what would this look like when I'm inside the system? One of the other things we heard today, we talked with Ferndale, which was one of the two pilot districts in the county. Typically, only one district was selected per county to be a pilot district. Oakland, of course, was able to fengal two. That was South Lion and Ferndale. And they were able to leverage that they were two different-sized districts and hence the partnership. So, we've talked to both districts, and they're both having totally different experiences with the platform. But Ferndale was talking about that when they had two people inside the system, they were actually, as they were inputting data, x-ing out the other person's data. And South Lion was saying, when we practice in the sandbox and put in fake data to practice on the beta, now we can't delete it and we can't put in the real data now. So, just underscore that there's still a lot to iron out with that platform. But the process is really in that human side of those teams coming together and the new sets of data that have to come to the table. So, that's what we've been really hearing in the stories in the study as we dig into My KIP. Next slide. You can keep going. So, where are we as a district? We gave you this broad overview, but Susan and I have been working hard to really study and research everything that's out there. And we've been trying to build the infrastructure within our own system around My KIP. So, part of that is looking at MDE's guidelines for who should be on the different teams that they want in place. And one is this district My KIP core leadership team, which is where the building teams come together with representatives that will be meeting once a month. We sort of use this year's TLCs to sort of start some of that work or lean into some of that work. But next year, this My KIP core team will meet once a month. Also, next year, another team that MDE is recommending in place is this larger district team that has multiple stakeholders involved, PTO members, board members, community stakeholders, as well as representatives from the building teams or from that core team to meet at least a couple of times a year to look at what you're doing with school improvement and building, or I'm sorry, district improvement and look at how it impacts the larger system and everybody involved in that system. The other thing that will be in place as we think about all the gears and mechanisms that need to work together is that buildings will still have their own school improvement teams, but their work will be focused on our district work as a cohesive system. And they'll still be meeting once a month to look at how is their building doing in relation to our goals. Next slide. So, the other thing that we're making sure, we just want to make sure this is embedded next year as part of our continuous improvement work, is that we are anticipating and expecting that buildings will come to Board of Education meetings once a month next year. Each building is to come and share out and highlight their data and highlight what we're doing with continuous improvement work. So, you can see how that building is working within the system, and they'll be coming to board meetings monthly. So, just to recap in a broad way what has been occurring over the last few months, it was really in April that Carrie and I were able to spend consecutive days really digging into a lot of the resources and start building out all these different mechanisms, the core team roster, and then doing the in-between work to get ready to launch our first BHS, My KIP core team launch, which was near the end of May. And as you heard Carrie mention, Teaching Learning Council has worked as our larger My KIP stakeholder group this year where we come together and we look at data and we look at our strategies and what kind of impacts we're having. And so, that work needed to occur also in wrapping up our ECL as we make our end-of-year report. If you were to walk into Learning Services office space, you would probably also notice that we've started to wallpaper, one wall, with calendars across the year. And what, you'll see some nice little rainbow colors that we're going to be inserting into each day. But Carrie and I have been trying to really work through all the mechanisms of meetings when there's data assessment windows, reporting windows, and really timing the just-right moments that we need to have these different mechanisms of infrastructure, meeting groups, meeting, when they might be also where we're out in buildings meeting with them so that we have that thoroughly layered effect planned out before we launch into the school year. Next slide. So, to really put it into perspective of where we're at, we've been working a lot in the learning and planning phase. We've been putting ourselves in anything My KIP. We've been reaching out to friends, and we've actually been starting to build our own network of collaboration. So far, we have about three. We're going to, we've tied up with the pilot districts of South Lion and Ferndale and said, hey, let's meet every month and let's really share how each of us is coming at this. And they said, yes, definitely. And I imagine that that group will probably grow as word gets out. We've also been, as you've heard, really working on that infrastructure building. And we've been working on the timing mechanisms and the calendaring. So, that's really the three conceptual layers really of the My KIP work that Carrie and I have been digging into in the last few months. Next slide. Just in case you want some summer reading, these are two books, two books that we have been hearing about in multiple learning events around My KIP. And we shared chapter one from the Internal Coherence Framework at our Teaching Learning Council and did some shared foundational learning together as a district group. We will probably either do kind of a mix of books or we might do a whole book study as a group. There's another title that's not on the slide. That's Victoria Bernhardt, brand-new, just out about all the different types of data. So, in a follow-up email, we will be putting together a linked resource guide for you because there are so many resources out there, just in case you're interested in any of the things that we've shown you and you want to drill down a little bit deeper. Next slide. So, as we share what's been happening in our district, we really wanted to focus in on this whole child mindset because that's new for a lot of folks in the improvement world. And this WSCC model, that's what you'll hear the acronym called, but now you know what it is. It's this whole school, whole child, whole community. And we've taken some time to really look at this wheel and what it means. And during our My KIP core launch, we honed in on that green section to really study and look at that further. And what does it mean to say that a child needs to be healthy and safe in school? What does that really mean and how might that look? As we look at the types of data we might collect and how we support, best support our students, as we look at not just an achievement data, but these other types of health and safety data that, and the tenants around whole child that are being advocated for in the My KIP, right? And this is a national model as well, so we're not the only state that has latched onto this, but states like Ohio, Massachusetts, other states have gravitated toward this WSCC model as they do their improvement work as well. So, it's not just Michigan. Next slide. So, as I mentioned during our My KIP core launch, we wanted to start building this mindset around whole child, and we focused in on those five tenants that you just saw in that green section of that wheel. The ASCD rolled out some documents that give schools the meaning behind each one of those five tenants. And under each one of these, there's 10 indicators, which will help in continuous improvement work. When you dig and drill down into these and you look at those 10 indicators, you can see, how are we doing to keep kids engaged in school? And where can we get better? Where can we shore up things and improve? So, it'll help support our school improvement teams, or I'm sorry, district improvement team and the ways that we work and think about kids. As part of that resource document that we just mentioned, we're going to make sure that each one of these is linked in there so you have that resource too, so you can drill down into each one of these five tenants of whole child. We actually spent some time talking about each one of these and thinking about where some ways that as a district, we want to engage or do some further inquiry into within these five tenants. The other thing about this that I want to point out is that Michigan has their own whole child definition, their own model that, with this WSCC that's embedded in it. And so, we'll link that resource in your resource packet as well. And the other thing that they've put out there to support the whole child work is the sustainability piece. And it's the idea that if you have these five tenants, you're looking and using, looking at these indicators and you're using them, you want it sustainable within your system. You want it embedded and inculcated in your system. And what are the indicators to show that it's living and breathing well in your system? And so, they have a sustainability document that also has indicators to make sure you're focused on those five tenants. So, we'll make sure that you have that information too. And I think the final slide is next. So, here's where we're at. We're putting the finishing touches, actually. That's what I was working on before we stepped down here for our ECL report and that flowed out of our TLC data last meeting, June 2nd. We're going to be pivoting very quickly into that My KIP, writing out the plan, the goal, the strategic. We have to input one goal in the system. That doesn't mean that as a district, we have one goal. It just means they're saying, take one goal through the process, and they're highly recommending that. And everybody that we have talked to who's a little bit further on this has said, yes, don't bite off more than one goal when you're learning the system. And we're going to continue fleshing out that calendar of dates and especially on the LST side for the whole year. So, we still have our math and our reading and SEL goal areas, even though you just heard me say one goal. Again, I want to emphasize that does not mean that we're only working on one goal. It just means we're taking one goal through the practice year with the My KIP platform. And that's it.
Thank you. I know we have, see if Michelle has any questions. Michelle, any questions? I don't know if she can hear me. Michelle, any question? Do you have any questions?
Oh.
Sorry.
Questions. I did have one really quick question. When you were covering, Carrie, when you were covering the five tenants and looking at the different areas, is there anywhere that it also encompasses, we're talking about the whole child, the sense of belonging and how that connects or is outlined in one of the tenants?
So, Michelle, thank you for asking that question. I don't think it's directly embedded in the five tenants. We'd have to drill down into those indicators further to see. I think it's informally embedded, but not directly.
It might be part of the safe category.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah.
Each one of those, I think they're linked in our board update. Each one of those five things has its own long sheet. So...
Yeah. I don't recall seeing it, but I can go back and check.
We'll make sure to follow up with a one-pager with all the links for you too, just to make it a little easier so you don't have to find everything.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I go first? No, he goes first.
No, Jennifer really wanted to go first.
No, John. He's going first.
During the presentation, there was a month-by-month. Is that, are those the three months in the process that you guys have, that you've been through already?
Yeah. Those things have been completed. So, those are, those are kind of the big, broad strokes. There's a lot of the small, granular work behind that, obviously, but that's been where we've been bringing together a lot of the teams. And it's been in the moments when we're looking at data and we're building the mindset.
Quite yet, they have like a, it's like a six-month process. Then when we get back in the fall, that's when the implementation comes into place.
Yeah. So, here's what I'll say about that. So, there, the document that they gave, the month-by-month guide, it does go longer. We just showed you the two pages. It took us over there. But what's nice about it is it kind of gives you what you're supposed to be working on. So, we kind of have a guide of what we should be doing to build this whole process. But it doesn't mean like month one is September. It doesn't mean month two is October, right? But what's nice is it's not linear either. Like, if there's something that makes more sense to do at another time, we can go back to it. But we've got that to reference to say, oh, let's go back. It makes sense to do this now, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, even though it's a month-by-month, step-by-step guide, it doesn't mean you have to go in order on everything, but we're trying to follow what it says to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure we're doing it with fidelity and building our whole system around that process.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Jennifer?
So, Beth, do you mind pulling up in the beginning of the PowerPoint, the nice colored circle diagram that shows My KIP? So, I sort of have three little questions or maybe their comments. Yeah, there we go.
Page five, I think, probably.
Yeah. So, I just have a, this is fantastic. I'm, I know I'm tired and don't look at, but I'm really super excited about this. I think this just serendipitously for timing draw, will draw us into a level of coherence that we've, you know, we've been talking about for a long time. So, the outer rim, mission, vision, beliefs, right? So, beliefs, core values and beliefs we've passed. Mission and vision, we're arduously working on next and will hopefully be done soon. And so, my question slash comment is, I think it's, I think it'll be great to hear from each, from different buildings. And I, I think, I don't want to discourage that in any way, and it doesn't have to be long. But I think from a board perspective, it would also be really helpful if these My KIP reportings could also like go outside as well as inside, right? And also, if you could connect the work to our mission, our vision, our core beliefs, and the strategic plan. Like you said, this is all, this is all one big spider web, right? But it's logical. And I assume that the things we've been working on for goal area one, the targets, those are, those are like little nuggets in this My KIP process, right? Maybe not all of them, right? I mean, I mean, they wouldn't represent everything worked up in My KIP, but they're, they're all supposed to be there. So, that, that's just a little ask because I think that would be helpful. And then, my last question is, as I recall from reading the document that we were first sent from MDE or whatever, the first step is really the turquoise at the top, the assess needs. And I was in both Teaching and Learning Council meetings. Thank you for letting me watch that. I think, and so, the five tenants, the safe, the challenged, all that stuff, I remember you guys leading the group through, look at these lists and basically, what I was witnessing, I think, I'm just looking for verification, is that you were kind of using that as a guide to a needs assessment so that each building leadership could, and I think that was the document, I forget what you called it, the one-pager where the different schools wrote down notes.
Oh, the note catcher.
The note catcher. That's right. So, that was, and so, I'm just, I... So that was, and so I'm just, I remember seeing that, but I'm also wondering what else is going on in terms of needs assessments and whether, whether, like you said, we're going to start with one thing and take it through? Is that how it works? Like you start with one goal and then you, and then each thing has its own needs assessment? Or like, how does that, how does that work?
I was going to go back and take the first question. All right. So let's go back to your original comment.
Okay.
Question. And I appreciate it, because I feel like we're on the same wavelength about this, because we're thinking the same thing, that we want to connect the dots for people when we have those bigger MyKIP core teams. I'm sorry, not the big, not the biggest, but our core team that's going to meet regularly to look at data, like the representatives from the building teams. We already, in our first MyKIP launch, the very end, we were connecting what's in the strategic plan and Goal Area One and what we've kind of been working on, you know, outside with those target, those metrics, right? The measurable objectives. So we wanted to connect that for people, so that we start connecting the dots, that whatever we're doing, we're connecting to all of our district work, our mission, vision, beliefs, and making sure that, and we'll make that as part of our norms next year, that when we're in those meetings, we are connecting the work that we're doing with our broader vision as a district, right? And how we're impacting the system. So definitely something that we're going to make sure is living and breathing, and we started that work already. So I think we're, we're on track with that, and we're going to keep it moving just like that as we move forward.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Because we had the MyKIP district leadership launch, and that's where we did share the measurable metrics in the goal areas. We did not share that with Teaching Learning Council, because I don't think it had gone out to the full board. And we knew that we would have parents in, in the meeting, so we didn't know if it was ready for prime time, so to speak, so.
Yep, we wanted to make sure our administrators are aware that that's out there.
Yeah.
For sure. And then your second part.
Just about, like, how are we going about needs assessments? If you could just elaborate on that, I think that would be helpful. Because as I, as I understand it, that's sort of where this starts? I mean, you're, it's confusing, right? Because you're supposed to have your strategic goals and targets from the strategic plan, and that's sort of top-down, right? But then, like we were doing in Teaching and Learning Council, then there's really grassroots needs assessments from the, the building data and the building, just cultural elements, right? So I struggle with, how does one really go about the needs assessment process?
Yeah. So what I would say to that is I feel like we've started some of that work. I think we've, we've started launching some of the cognitive shifts and the work that we're going to be doing as we look at children. We feel like, I'm just giving this as an example, in math, we've started some of that work, and we'll continue that work into next year. Where around math, we've been looking at data. We have that National Equity Project goal that we're working on, right? We've done some perception data, because as part of this new platform, it's not just about student achievement data, but it's also, how are kids doing socially and emotionally? What are, what are our empathy interviews telling us, right? That perception data and that feeling data, too. So we're, like, I feel like we're just starting to lean into this work. But as we go into next year and we look at our data in the fall, then we're going to look at those areas of inquiry that we need to dig into further to complete that needs assessment and get that whole picture of the child, specifically around math, right? Just as an example. But I feel like we've started shifting into that now. And then the example, like we gave earlier, like, just as another example, those five tenants and digging into those indicators, and what are areas of inquiry that are action that we want to take to research further? We need more data around it, we need to talk about it, to figure out, how do we collect that? So that it's a part of our conversation around our goal around math.
I think what I'd add, too, is when you go through the process that MyKIP is really laying out, you're really starting first with your data story. So I think what's, what we're growing, and we talked about this in, you know, BIC with, what are the new data streams that maybe we don't currently have, right? To get that more robust whole child lens. So moving away from just solely the testing data, achievement data, and having that multifaceted data story is where you start to drill down into where are our needs. So that's, I think that's what you're hearing Carrie describe, because we're trying to build that mindset of pushing into thinking of multiple data streams that maybe we haven't been looking at yet.
Beth, could you go back to slide number five, please?
Here we go. I am so thrilled, I am giddy.
You're going to do it.
I'll do anything. I'll get up and put my hat and get up on the table.
You're on the right path. Keep going.
January 2019, two and a half years ago, I was sitting in Lansing in the State Board of Education meeting. And Dr. Terry Nugent did a presentation to the State Board of Education on this new system called MyChIP, MyKIP, My-whatever. You know, no one knew how to pronounce it. I've got the PowerPoint right here. Two and a half years later, here we are. Incredible. On this, what, what MyKIP does is it ties the team of eight to the teachers and to all the rest of the organization. We're responsible for that gray ring around the, well, it's not gray up there, but it's on the graphic, it's gray. Mission, vision, beliefs, goals. That's what we do. We created a strategic plan. It was two pages. Two pages ain't no plan. I call it a strategic framework. A plan actually has strategies, actually has things that are going to be implemented on the ground. We don't do that. You guys do that. That's what this does. This allows us to, as an organization, we do our part. We say what, you say how, or he says how. The what is the outer ring.
Howard, is there a question coming?
And the inner ring is your job. So I am absolutely beside myself in terms of where we're going with this. Realize also that we, the board, in the next presentation that we're working on, are still working on our vision and mission. So this is a moving target, unfortunately. We can't help that in terms of, we're working on the vision, we're working on the mission, or on the mission. We're also going to be working on the goals, because we haven't, as a board, really talked about those new things that some subset of the board has been working on. So you got to go with the flow here a little bit as we get our job done. Once we do that, we hand it off to you, and you do the color in the center, and then report back to us. And also, monitor and evaluate. That's the accountability. We just did, we just approved the Michigan Association of School Boards Governance Standards, which says that it's our responsibility to hold us and you guys accountable, evaluate, to see how we're doing against these goals. We, as a district, really haven't done that as well as we need to. And I see this system as the culmination of being able to really give us a full strategic plan that grows and evolves year after year. And it's not static. It doesn't happen once, and then we put it on the shelf, and then three or four years later, we look at it again. We look at it all the way through as the data evolves.
Howard, is there a point of order? Is there a question coming?
There is no question. This is a statement of that I am thrilled with this and just keep on going. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you.
Question?
Susan and Carrie, so could you tell us a little bit about, like, the physical, or not physical, the actual actions you're doing at, in the district, right? Is it going across all levels, high, middle, and elementary at the same time? Is there going to be a different emphasis across those three different groups? And then within high, middle, and elementary, refocusing on, on reading versus math versus ELA? I mean, are they different?
Are you okay with me sharing what Ferndale's example was today?
Yep, and I can add on.
Okay.
So I think, hearing your question, like what Ferndale was talking to us about, where they were, literacy was their goal, but at each grade band, there might have been slightly different strategies, because you want to be specific to that grade band. So disciplinary literacy might have been for secondary, where they might have had, I think it was the critical essential literacy practices.
Essential literacy practices.
In K5.
Yeah.
And so the strategies might have differed, but the focus was still universally K-12 on literacy building. Does that answer?
Yes, thank you. And within those buildings, I presume you're looking at data by group, if some groups tend to perform at, at a lesser achievement level than others, and you're segregating that data and trying to correlate it with the five tenants? Is that things that we're looking at?
Yeah, and I would say that we're trying to look at all the different types of data as well. And we're also trying to investigate what other types of data do we need to study, right? Which is why we're doing some of the deeper dives into things. But different levels have different assessments, right? Like we know at the elementary level, they have Fanta's and Pennell, which is their, you know, to assess their reading level and their word accuracy and their fluency and comprehension. But at secondary, there's different types of assessments, right? And so we want to make sure that we're looking at data by level, elementary, middle school, high school, as well as disaggregating all of that data as far as student achievement. But then we also want to start drawing in perception data as well.
Got it. Thank you.
So yes, the idea is to look at all of it, and then figure out what other types of data do we need to collect to help our data story.
Thank you.
Just to, if I can piggyback quickly, because the high school wasn't at the two TLC meetings. So could you just throw out an example of how the high school's being incorporated into the work?
Yeah, and the reason for that was, the TLC was really initially launched to help us with the ECOOL, which was K-8. But yes, they are still a part of the work, and they actually were at the MyKIP leadership, district leadership. So in terms of, are you asking in terms of like a strategy and a focus in literacy?
Yeah, just, just a couple of detail, just, you know, any info you could share about what's going on at the high school level?
Grades. You want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, some of the data that they're looking at right now, which you may have already seen or heard about, is like the grades, how are kids doing with their grades overall in high school? They're looking at their SAT data, their, any PSAT data that they have, as well as, you know, how many kids need credit recovery? How many kids are at risk of failing? What are we doing about that? How are we building and programming to support students in need during this time? So they're absolutely looking at data, it just may look a little different than what you see at the other levels. But they are, and you've, you've heard about some of that at a board meeting. But they're definitely engaged in our process, and we're going to continue to add on with them as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pat, Pat has a comment.
Todd, I just want to personally thank you and your whole team. What you've been able to do, the 16 months I've been here, no one truly will realize. To say you've been throwing curveballs, in particular by me, would be a gross understatement. I think I've thrown you five pitches at once, came back two days later and said, no, we're not really doing that. Do this instead, and have three hybrid models at the same time, and I need it tomorrow. So thank you again to you, your team. You've hit a homerun every time. I can't tell you how many times I've shared out our work with other superintendents, not just in Michigan, but other states, that have literally cut and pasted what your team's put together, rolled it out, got kudos, and great feedback from the community, and moved on. I can't guarantee you'll get a stipend from these other districts, but I know they are very thankful. So thank you on behalf of our students.
With that.
I think Michelle.
Michelle has a question. Oh, Michelle. Michelle? Can you not hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry. You probably can't really see me, because I've been online. Just wanted to, to thank you again. I think it's amazing, not to echo what Pat has already said, but I do want to make sure that I make the statement again about making sure we're looking, you know, beyond the scopes of, you know, the chart of the students in Bloomfield. And am I in a classroom full, and is if I'm an imposter and suffering from imposter syndrome? Or am I, you know, feeling as if I don't belong? And those things aren't identified within the indicators and the components of the sheets. So I just hope that we're also thinking beyond the pages and scopes of our students, and what else we can bring, you know, beyond what's already outlined. Just keeping that in mind as we're moving forward.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Thanks, Michelle. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will go, Fleesh is online. We will go to 4D, District Mission and Vision. Michelle Harmeloff?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Yes, I am online today. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join you this way. What I don't know is what you have after me. I know the meeting time was six to nine, so do you want me to work from now till nine? Or do you have other items you need to finish after me? Just so I know what I'm working with.
We have one thing that Michelle Southward is presenting on, Goal Five. So this, I think we can go from now until nine, and then at nine o'clock, we can go to Michelle Southward.
Okay, sounds good. All right, super. So you should have received from Rebecca some homework to get us ready for today. So I'd like to start off with the homework around our book, The Speed of Trust. I asked that you think about our continued work on building our team. Bring a quote or a concept or idea from the book that you'd like to share, something that was important to your own learning and growth, and that will help you to build trust with the team. So I want you to share that, either quote or concept. And then after you do that, you have to be brief, be bright, and be out of there. You have about 30 seconds to a minute to share why that was important to you. And the reason I want you to be brief is, we want to get to the vision and mission, but we want to ground our work in the work we've been doing behind the scenes. So I'm, again, going to start with Michelle online, and then I'll go around the room. So following Michelle, I'm going to go to Pat. So Michelle, go ahead and share your one concept. If you need to pass, please feel free to do so, if you're not ready to share today. Michelle, go ahead and start.
Thank you for giving me a free out, but I don't need to pass today. So my, my segment is on page 327, and it's actually starting with the quote from Mahatma Gandhi, sorry about that. And it's, "The weak can never forgive. Forgiveness is an attribute of strong." And then underneath that, it says, "Forgiveness is a principle of better life. It's also a part of our responsibility in righting wrongs. When we don't forgive, we violate this crucial behavior." And so I just thought that this was definitely something to live on, and so as we, you know, we, we're not perfect people, and so we're all going to make some mistakes along the way, and I think we have to figure out how we can forgive and continue to grow. So that was my one minute of explanation and quote, right?
Nice job. Very timely and efficient. Thanks, Michelle. Pat, you're going to go next, and you'll be followed by Jennifer.
I'm actually going to pass her right now.
Sounds good. Then Jennifer, you'll go now, and then you'll be followed by Howard.
Okay. Hi. My phrase is on page 195. It's the quote in italics. "Careful messaging to downplay problems makes you appear to be lying, deluded, ignorant, or uncaring. Sharing problems is an act of inclusion that makes employees feel invested in the larger enterprise." And that, that just speaks to me with the work in, in the district. You know, just my observation, there's no judgment here, but my observation as becoming a ever-more-involved volunteer from the district, as we suffer from a disease called happy talk. And yes, it's, it's good to congratulate oneself when things are going right, but that, it's important to move very quickly to, to the things that we need to work on, and to have no fear, and to be very collaborative about that, because that's, that's the way we get better. So I, I really want this, my, my aspiration for our district is to have a culture where, where discussing problems is not seen as, as weakness or deficiency, or, or anything, or failure, or anything of that nature. It's actually quite the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Howard, followed by Lisa.
Okay, so I found that the author, Mr. Covey, summarized exactly what I was thinking, so I just quoted, looked at a number of different pieces of what he said. Behavior number nine, clarify expectations. Clarify expectations to create shared vision. Clarify expectations to create shared vision and agreement about what is to be done upfront. I call it the behavior of prevention, because if you focus on this upfront, you avoid headaches and heartaches and headaches later on. Clarify expectations is based on the principles of clarity, responsibility, and accountability. As I said in the four core chapters on results, it's generally more effective to focus on results than activities. I have learned to quantify everything. What results? By whom? By when? At what cost? This is how we, how will we measure it? How will we know when we have accomplished it? And when and to whom is accountability in terms of benchmarks and end results?
Excellent. Thank you, Howard. Lisa, followed by Paul.
My quote was from page 144, sorry, 143. Behavior number one, straight talk, straight. Most people don't flat-out lie, at least not blatantly. Instead, they engage in counterfeit behaviors such as beating around the bush, withholding information, double talk, speaking with the forked tongue, flattery, positioning, posturing, and, the granddaddy of them all, spinning communication in order to manipulate the thoughts, feelings, or actions of others. Another dangerous counterfeit is technically telling the truth but leaving a false impression. This is mincing words legally and splitting hairs. All of these behaviors invariably diminish trust. And I picked it because, to me, it's sort of indicative of what we do in education in general, not necessarily just this district, but, you know, self-preservation or preservation of the entity.
Thank you, Lisa, followed by, it'll be Paul, followed by John.
Okay, so my quote is, "The reality is that everybody makes mistakes. The issue isn't whether you make them, it's what you do about them." So, I guess to reflect on that is, I've made mistakes. I'll make plenty of mistakes now. I made plenty of mistakes in the past. I'll make plenty of mistakes in the future. It's whether or not you can learn and grow from your mistakes, and that's what I try to do. I try to learn from my mistakes. So, it's not intentional, but, you know, it's feedback. All types of feedback is positive feedback, because feedback is how you grow and be better in the future.
Thank you, Paul. John, followed by Siva. And then Pat, if you'd like to finish it up, fine. If you want to continue to pass, that's fine.
All right, so, I've got two. They're kind of combined. One is Gandhi quote, "The moment there is suspicion about a person's motives, everything he does becomes tainted." And then, when, where did I type that? But then, also, "The best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago; the second-best time is today." And so, just because we might question each other's motives from before, you know, we could still plant that tree today and not, you know, worry about, you know, what happened in the past. I know it doesn't quite follow with the tree planting, but I think looking to the past and thinking of all the things we didn't do, or we could have done, or we should have done differently, like, we can change that by planting that tree today, so. That's all I got.
Just if you wouldn't mind leaning into your mic a little bit when you speak.
Yeah, sorry about that.
When the masks on. I lost the tail end, but if your peers heard you, no need to repeat, but I'm guessing Michelle might not have heard you either. So, if there's a need to repeat...
Essentially, we can plant the tree today, even if we didn't, you know, it doesn't matter what happened in the past, we can, you know, the second-best time to plant a tree is today, so.
Great. Thank you, John. Siva?
Thank you, Michelle. So, here is my favorite one from the book. I don't know the page number, I'm just going from what I scribbled on here. "We judge ourselves by our intentions and others by their behavior." Right? To me, that one really set the light bulb, or turned it on, big time. So, yeah, we really look at others' behavior through our own lens, and rarely put ourselves in their shoes when we hear what they're saying, but not, don't necessarily listen or look at it from their perspective. So, that was my favorite. Thank you.
Thank you, Siva. Pat, would you like to jump in, or are you going to continue to pass?
I'll jump in. For me, there can't be just one favorite, and I could pick a different one on a different day, depending what's occurred or what's happened. But I'll share this one. "In a high-trust relationship, you can say the wrong thing, and people will still get your meaning. In a low-trust relationship, you can be very measured, even precise, and they'll still misinterpret you." It just speaks to what we all know is the most important thing, which is relationships. Relationships drive everything.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking a minute to share what was important to you in the text. Please continue to read if you haven't. Finish the book. I know there's work coming up in the month of July, and maybe some of this will continue into that conversation. So, thank you for taking part in that. Let's transition now to our conversation about the vision and mission. I'm going to just quickly share my screen relative to the PowerPoint that we have used in the past, just the slide on what a vision and mission are, so that you can get those fresh in your mind. So, let me get that rolling for you. Okay. So, got my yellow flag handy, even though I'm far away. But let's look at vision and mission, and let me enlarge this slide for you. Can you see that? We're going to look at the, thank you. We're going to look at the vision. You had asked me after the last meeting to come up with some draft items, which I did send to you, and I'll put that up on the screen in a minute. So, we'll look at vision again as your direction, and it describes the future you want into the three-to-10-year range somewhere for your district. No perfect number there, but be thinking ahead a few years, because it's going to take you a while to get things into place. We'll come back to this slide before we do mission, but let's go to, I seem to have lost my cursor, which, there we go. Okay. Stop sharing that, and I'm going to share the document that I sent out to you by way of review. And I want to share that so that you can see where we were and quickly refresh your Okay. All righty. So, in our work at the last meeting, sorry, disappeared on my screen, rigid a little bit here, before I come to you. Okay. So, last time we were together, we looked at, at that time, it was E-10 of the recommended or suggested vision statements from the group. And then, you provided some thoughts around words you thought were important to be included in that statement, and then we did some grouping. So, after the meeting, I moved the items of similar colors together, so that what you thought of as common or connected terms were grouped together. That was sent to you ahead of time, so you have it. And then, I provided you with some draft items using the language that you had suggested be included in E-10. So, take a minute and just review these for yourself. I did move them into a spreadsheet. There are two, there's another one at the bottom here, so please review all of them. I just want to make sure they're fresh in your mind, so I'm going to give you two minutes to do that. I have 8:05. I'm going to give you to 8:07 to review those. If we need more time at 8:07, please let me know. But please take two minutes and read each of those, so they're fresh in your mind. need? Okay, not hearing anybody speak up. I'm going to move. I have these same items in a spreadsheet, so I'm going to stop sharing this one. They were just easier to see this way. Stop sharing this one and bring up the spreadsheet. The reason I want to do that is, I'll be able to document your answers as you think about ways in which you want to prioritize these particular statements. Can you see the spreadsheet? So-so? Okay, thank you. I will do the writing on the screen, but you may want to keep these in your mind if you want to open up the document you received, or if you've printed it out. That's great, you can do that, too. What I'd like to do, then, is ask you, in the order I've written at the top, so I have Siva, then John, then Paul, then Lisa, then Howard, then Jennifer, then Pat, then Michelle, kind of reverse order of the way we just spoke. And what I'd like to do is ask you to tell me the one or two that you would like to bring forward to the team, and I'm only going to mark your one or two, so you don't get to rate all of them as ones you want to bring forward. And if you would call them out by the line number, so there's 2, 4, all the way through 12, and I'm going to start off, Siva, so if you would let me know what your number one and your number two are.
Number one, Michelle, would be row 12.
Okay. And your number two?
And then, number two would be...
If you have one, and if you don't, that's fine.
Actually, I think I'm going to stick with just one.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
If I could just say that...
Next.
Sorry, if I just had a comment, that I would probably suggest flipping the phrases around, but, again, that's something we could debate later.
Yes, and we will do, just like we did in the process last time, once we sort of have one or two that everybody can work with, then we'll work with language and wordsmithing. So, thank you for mentioning that. Who would like to go? Let's see, who do I have next here? John, you're up.
Is 12 the last one in the Word document?
Yes.
Yep, they're in the exact same order, and that is the last one.
Okay. I like that one as well. I, yeah, as far as wordsmithing goes, I like maybe a start of, in an inclusive environment, instead of an inclusive, through an inclusive system, but we can talk about that, I guess.
Yep, good. Hang on to that, and we're going to do some of that in a minute. So, thank you. Yep, great. And do you want to mark a second one, or just that one?
Just that one for now. Or, I guess if I don't get, I'm not sure. I like that one the most, I didn't really pick a second one.
Okay, very good. Paul?
I like 4.
Okay. Any others?
Since it seems to be popular, I guess we can go for 12.
Okay. All right, I'll give that your number two.
Michelle, could you, okay, never mind. You just did what I needed you to do. I couldn't see where, the end of 12.
Oh, got it. Yeah, I can move those down in a minute if you need others. All right, Lisa, your one or two?
All right, I just want to clarify, my understanding was that we, that it was your recommendation to pick one, either one of the last two. So, I did that and picked 12. I don't have a second choice.
Okay. That's absolutely fine. Yes, I was trying to get you think ahead, and I thought those were more concise than some of the others, so that was my recommendation, but you two...
Right. Well, can I ask you a question? Those were not on the original list. Those were you taking some of the terms that we came up with and making sort of a conglomerate of ideas, right?
Yes, yes. That was the homework from last time, that I sort of draft some out of the conversation and the language.
Okay, so, just for a full disclosure, I only really looked at the last two per your recommendation, and I liked the last one best of those two.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Howard?
The nomenclature here is a little confusing. I am going to take the fourth one. Is that, I can't read the numbers.
Okay.
The fourth one down, and then the fifth one down.
You might have said something after that, Howard, but you drifted away.
I'm sorry, I didn't have the mic down. My bad.
Is yours on line eight, Howard?
Oh, good.
I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry.
They're all even numbers.
Yeah, what line, what row number is the one you picked? Is it number eight?
Can't read it, that's the problem.
Are you looking at the fourth version down?
I'm looking at the document you gave us, and it's, I mean, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, there are six of them, and I'm taking the fourth one down and the fifth one down of the six.
Got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Howard. There are some row numbers to the far left, so is the fourth one down your first choice?
Yes.
And the fifth one down is your second choice?
Correct, because you recommended the fifth and the sixth one, correct?
Yes, I sure did.
Okay, then we're on the same page. Okay.
Michelle?
Thank you.
If I can jump in here, since I'm an Excel jock, if we could...
All right, I appreciate it.
If we can widen column A to the right, they could all fit on the screen much easier, and you could shrink the rows down a little bit.
Thank you. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Let me enlarge it a little bit.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah.
I got to move you guys out of the way, because your picture keeps getting in the way of my documenting here, and I can see if I can enlarge that a bit for you now that I have some bigger rows.
She just asked for you.
There we go.
Much better.
How's that?
Excellent.
It was a real eye test before.
All right. All right, very good. Jennifer, your turn.
Okay, could you scroll it down? I'm sorry.
Now I just shrunk them again.
Now you're going the wrong direction.
That's okay, that's okay. You can leave it.
Yeah.
You can leave it there. Yeah, I like this, I'm doing the same thing Howard is. I like, I want Portrait of a Learner in there, and those are the two with Portrait of a Learner. And I would put the, I would put the row eight as my first, because it talks about educational debt. I also have just a comment, if we go with one of these phrases, the word unlimited with unlimited possibilities is not, it's not sitting very well with me, because, you know, like, it's not, you know, like, my two kids aren't going to the NBA, right? because, you know, like, it's not, you know, like, my two kids aren't going to the NBA, right? So I just feel like we need to say something generous, but that the word unlimited is a little bit inaccurate.
We'll get there.
Okay.
We're going to get into wordsmithing.
Just throwing it out there.
It's okay, and I think people sharing a little bit is good. I just didn't want to get too far into commentary for right now, but we'll come back to that. So very important conversation to be had. Pat, your turn.
12.
And that's your first choice?
First choice and only choice.
Okay, great. And Michelle Southward?
So, because I really can't read your screen, I'm going to... The last one.
Okay, yep.
Then the other one, 1, 2, 3... 3 from the bottom. 1, 2, 3 from the bottom.
So the same one that others have chosen is...
Oh, I don't know. I can't really see it. So the third one from the bottom. I have your... I have the... I have the screenshot of the screen. I just can't see your form, so...
So with your permission as a group, before we start having any dialogue, I'd like to delete a couple rows. So I'd like to delete the rows with no contribution or rating. Is there anyone opposed to me getting rid of some of this language so that we can see what's on the screen?
Clear the clutter.
Clear the clutter. You got it. All right. Now we have four of them on the screen with ratings. And let me... There, can you see what's going on?
Yep. That's a lot easier to see.
Okay, now, there you go. Thank you. Good to get rid of a few. Here's what I'd like you to do next. I'd like you to think about whether or not there are simple tweaks, and I'm in particular thinking about those of you who looked at the number one, the one that's listed on the top, the one that is listed second, and the one that is listed third, because most everybody could get behind the last one. It doesn't mean that we have to choose that. But what I'd like to do is Paul, Howard, Jennifer, if you could look at some of the language in the first three to see if it should or could be included into the final one to give it... You don't have to worry about making it a perfect sentence, but are there items that you would want to move into that particular last one to make it doable? Or can you just not get behind the last one? So I'm going to start with Paul. Is there anything you could move from your chosen statement into the last statement on the page, or can you just not get behind the last one?
I can get behind the last one.
Okay. All right.
Can I just say, I like number one better than the new number four. I just, I didn't know that it was still on the table because I was going with one of your recommendations, Michelle, but it's...
Sure.
To me, it flows better. It's less wordy. It's more direct. I just like it better. So if it is still on the table for consideration, you know, I actually do like it better than number four.
Than number four. What language in that... Lisa, yeah, and Paul, come back to you, and then I'll go back to Lisa.
Yeah, just to go back, well, just to follow up on Lisa's point. What I like about the new one, whatever we want to call it now, as opposed to 12, it's about, you know, it's about less words. So it's not about me taking words from that and moving it. Can we make the last one less wordy?
Yeah, same.
Perfect. Same with you, Lisa? Yep. Okay, then I'm going to leave that one on the table. Let's look to the middle, Howard and Jennifer, and I'm going to start with Howard. Keeping in mind what a good vision should be, number one, good enough. And number two, my big worry is these are getting very lengthy, and if they're too lengthy, nobody will remember all the parts. And so think of elevator speech. Can you tell it to somebody between the floors as you travel up an elevator? And number two is it's 7-Eleven speak. In other words, somebody who wasn't at the table would understand what it means. So I'll start with Howard. Is there anything we could do to sort of reduce some of the wordiness and make it common in terms of people's thinking that would make that one simpler?
All right.
Either your... Either one of your choices.
So I had been thinking last week when I started going through this, that you've got a parenthetical phrase for half of it, you know, starting with the word "through", and then, comma, "BHS will." And I'm thinking the parenthetical phrase at the beginning, which is half of the vision, could very possibly end up in the mission statement, because a lot of those are "how's", you know, "through an inclusive system." Well, that's not a, that's not what a vision is. The system is what the administration does through their... It's not a vision, it's part of the mission, is having an inclusive system. So that's one way to contract the words and basically cut it pretty much in half. Now, we could look at individual words, want to move them around. But, so that's step number one. But that step number two, that is not in the fourth one, are Portrait of a Learner and Eliminate the Effect of Educational Debt. Now, Portrait of a Learner is, I said it the last time, this is something that was worked extensive, developed extensively by our Learning Services Group and the teachers, and I think that should be, if we really, as a district, really believe it and want it, then we, the board, should have it in our vision. Second is equity. So I said in the last meeting that equity is seen as the word "all, each, every." Okay, and we've got in both of these, in the last one, you know, and the one above it, we have the word "every," and that's good. But it takes a little work to sort of figure out what that really means. But if we say explicitly "eliminate the effect of educational debt," and remember, educational debt were the words that our superintendent provided us. If we say "eliminate the effect of educational debt," that is in black and white what we want is a vision for equity. So it's not ambiguous, it's not, you know, you don't have to dig in terms of what the heck it means, like "each" or "every." So I would, I would say that we can contract the number of words by taking out some of it and moving it to the mission statement, and then we can add "eliminate the effect of educational debt" and Portrait of a Learner. And I think, I looked at some of these, and I gave it an 8 out of 10. Remember at the last meeting? I said I couldn't, you know, I wasn't agreeing to any of the things that you were putting in? This, you know, these things are an 8 out of 10. What I just said would get it from an 8 to a 10 out of 10.
So Howard, I sort of tried to mark what you said by strike through the portion that could go into the mission, and then highlighting or bolding the big items that for you were critical. Have I captured it accurately just in this first one? I didn't mark them again in the second one because I think you mentioned them being the same item.
I was looking down. I wasn't looking at all your highlighting, so...
He would strike everything up to the word "learning" except the phrase "educational debt."
Oh, okay, except for that.
Yes.
Okay, let me get rid of all the other stuff.
Oh, I wasn't seeing where you were. Okay.
Yep, no, let me go back.
Jennifer is the Howard whisperer.
No, you just, you talked to me about this a few days ago, and it makes a lot of sense. And it would, it would make the vision statement manageable.
I'm going to do it in chunks just because it's easier to do that way. Give me a second.
And the other neat thing about what we've, what you, Michelle Harmela, put together, we had a lot of debate back and forth in terms of, you know, whether we want to really look at academic achievement or whether we wanted to have individual students reach their own goals, sort of the architects of their future concept. And the nice thing about what you ended up with, which I want to give you real props on, is you got both in there. So instead of doing one or the other, we got both. We have both the academic success and reach their own goals.
Great. Okay, Jennifer, do you want to speak about your thinking relative to the two that you rated?
Yeah.
Or if it's ditto of what Howard said, that's fine, too.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just parrot Howard. I think it's critical to have Portrait of a Learner in there because it speaks to all the character and whole child, not all the whole child traits, but many of the whole child traits that we say that we value every day. Respect, complexity, inquiry. I feel like it has to be in here or I can't get behind a statement where it doesn't exist. And I would like educational debt in there. I don't know how to phrase it. I don't know how to stick it in because it gives us another lighthouse. So, yeah. And I don't want to lose the thing, the things you just put in "strike through." I'd like to see them moved over to a mission statement.
All right. So Howard, I heard you point these items out here as achieve their academic success and reach their own goals is still critically important because they were both something the group was talking about. So I'm going to bold those as well.
Good.
Given what I just did with changing the second one down, Howard and Jennifer, would you be okay if I strike out, get rid of the third choice? So we're working with only the three? Or is there something in your number two that you want me to include?
So you're saying number two is what I, is your interpretation what I said? And I think it is.
Yes, and Jennifer's agreement, and so I would get rid of the third one.
Yeah, 3. Okay. Yeah, that's redundant now.
That's cool.
John, did you want to say something? Okay. All right, now we're going to have some...
Michelle, sorry.
I didn't hear you.
John has his hand up. I don't know if you can see from...
I cannot see anybody except for Michelle Southward. I think that's a limitation of being on virtual. So please do raise your, don't raise your hand, just speak out and interrupt. You'll have to do that so that I can know you're out there ready to share. So John, go ahead.
Michelle, are we going around? Is that...
We are, yep.
So I can just wait my turn?
We're going to. Yeah. I wanted to see if I could move Howard and Jennifer off of the second choice they had so we're working with fewer in number. So now what we're going to do is go around and talk about them, and I'm going to continue to go in the order you see listed on the screen. So I'll go Siva, John, Paul, Lisa, Howard, Jennifer, Pat, Michelle. And I won't keep changing that order just because it'll be easier for you and it'll be easier for me. So I'm going to start off with Siva. If you would look at the three and talk about whether or not you can get behind any that have changed, if there is particular language you want to highlight so that it's included in your vision. My goal is we leave with a pretty firm vision, even if it's not wordsmithed perfectly, but that all the chunks or phrases we want in it are included. So given what Howard and Jennifer recommended is that if we took the same language in this third choice now and did the same strike through, some of that would move into the mission statement, which I agree, some of it is more mission, but you guys had selected so many terms that you wanted in your vision. I was trying to be honoring of those, so I'm happy to put the strike throughs in there, but I will hold until we have some dialogue from those who have selected the bottom one as their first choice. So Siva, your turn to share.
So, Michelle, if I understood you correctly, our intention is to thrift it down and make it shorter?
Well, it could be. We just have to come up with one. So right now, we have some people thinking the first item is the best language for a vision. We have others thinking the edited second version is the best for a vision, and we have others of you looking at the third one. So we've got to kind of come to agreement on how can we mesh these or how can we shift people's view as to what is the best one?
Okay.
So if you'd just kind of talk through where you're at.
Okay, so I did have a comment on the second one. We talked about being able to give an elevator speech, right, to somebody, a layperson, so they would understand and get what we meant when he spoke or described our vision, right? So from that, if you put that lens on, I think while Portrait of a Learner is a great all-encompassing descriptive phrase, my concern is it would be comprehensible only to a very small segment of people who are in the know, right? And same for eliminating the effects of educational debt, right? So those are two things I still am not fully comfortable with, because if you, if you want to give an elevator speech, and given that I'm new, I don't know what Portrait of a Learner means. And so it seems to me like if you were to speak to somebody on the street and talk about the vision of VHS, they wouldn't get it. Right? So that's my view on that one. And same, and same for the effects of educational debt.
All right. Thank you, Siva. John, things you want to share so the group understands your thinking and where you're coming from?
Sure.
Anything you'd like to have me highlight or change?
Similar to Siva, with regard to Portrait of a Learner, that's not something that Bloomfield came up with. I mean, they may have came up with our Portrait of a Learner, but they didn't come up with the phrase Portrait of a Learner. And so it means a lot of things to a lot of different people. So if someone comes from a different district, they may have had their own Portrait of a Learner in some other district. And so to me, it's confusing what it means unless you reference, you go to another document. And I don't think a vision is something where you should need to go to another document to understand. And that similarly, to Siva's point, eliminating the effects of educational debt, while a, while wonderful, right now it is not in the common vernacular. It's, so a lot of people don't know what that means. I mean, they can kind of decipher what it means, but like, what we might mean by that, but it's not something that most people know right now. And maybe it will become, you know, the way we discuss this, you know, in the years to come, and maybe we'll be on the forefront, and we should do it, but I'll have to be convinced of that. And then, lastly, is it possible to have the, to Lisa's point, is it possible to have the one that we liked last week as a choice, like, just as is?
Which, the E10? The one we were, the one we considered that everybody was working from?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I can put that back on the screen. I'll just note it for now, and I'll read it. Do you have it in front of you, John? Would you like to read it, or would you like...
I do. It reads, and there's one, and to Jennifer's point, the unlimited possibilities reads in there, and I'm not sold on that, but the rest of it I do like. And it reads, "To provide students with unlimited possibilities for their future, the confidence to make choices that are right for them, and the knowledge that they are valued by and connected to others." It's simple. I do still like what we were calling 12 before, which is now 9. But, and so on that one, I would eliminate... I don't like the term "inclusive system." I don't know, maybe it's just "system." Because I think because I don't like that sounds like a contrived thing, whereas like, we want it to be like what we are, you know? Like, we're not trying to make a system that's inclusive. We want to be inclusive.
Okay.
And I, I like the idea of reach their own goals. I just don't like the way it reads for some reason.
Okay. So we can, we can wordsmith again. We just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to share their thinking, so no problem at all.
And I think from, from the one that we liked before, confidence to make their own choices kind of is like the same deal as reach their own goals, like, I don't know. Sorry. I'm not sure how this process works, and I'm just thinking out loud, I think. So I'll stop for now, and if I think of anything else, I'll try to interrupt.
So the process isn't going to give us the answer. The process is going to give everybody a chance to share their thinking so that each person can be heard and everybody's, the way you approach this work can be shared. You all will come up with something, but others are going to say the very same thing about the vision you create. They're going to say, what does it mean? And what did you mean by it when you created it? And as you all looked into the sort of coming of the MICIP process, it will have the ability to be connected to lots of things. But you're crafting it now through a lot of dialogue. The dialogue's the most important part. So no need to apologize for it. Sometimes it takes time for the wording to become what everybody wants it to be, but you've got to share your thinking with each other in order to get there. So Paul, anything you'd like to share?
Yep, yeah, just looking at it, looking at nine. So again, going to the point, less is more. This is how I would look at nine. VHS will empower every student to achieve and reach their own goals. I don't, I don't understand what academic success means, so I'd eliminate that. I think it's obvious, you know, that we're going to have an inclusive system, and it's something, again, well, and I agree with Siva, that Portrait of a Learner, if I said that to someone, they'd know what I'm talking about. So we've got to make it short, sweet, you know, and something that everyone can remember in their head.
And Paul, I tried to highlight what you said. Did I capture it? Will empower every child to reach their own goals?
It's the last line, taking out academic success.
Okay. Yep, perfect. I think I got that. All right. Thank you, Paul. Lisa?
So I like the new number four even better. And when Paul, when he just said take out, that's why. I like it better without that in there. I don't know what academic success means either. I agree, it's just a pet peeve of mine to have term of art in a document or a sentence or a statement without defining it. Portrait of a Learner is not clear, neither is educational debt. So I think it, it'll be frustrating to people to look at a vision that they don't understand. Yeah, I like it. Through the process, I think it's getting better. I like the change that Paul suggested to eliminate academic, it doesn't flow to me at all in the vision, and it's ambiguous. It means different things to different people. Obviously, we want our students to have academic success. It'll be reflected in every other thing, you know, that we do, but it just seems out of place in, it seems redundant and superfluous, and I'm all for streamlining this to make it even more concise. I like, I like that suggestion better. So I guess, I don't know which one we're working on now. If you took it out of the new number one, if you took academic success out, than that or the new number four, either one I think I could be comfortable with? I maybe like the last one better. I don't know. Maybe could you check the academic success? I don't know.
Okay. I'm going to, I just marked the first one by removing academic success. And in the third one, which is the one I edited in terms of the sharing that Paul provided, I'm going to just do a strike through on academic success there, just so it kind of captures what you were saying. And we can visually see.
Yeah, either of those two, the way they read now, as you edit them, I think are better. I mean, I'm open to, you know, more dialogue, but I think going in the direction of the less instead of adding to and making them longer is definitely positive.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa. Howard, things you'd like to share?
Yes. All right, to comment on some of the things I've been hearing. First, the reason why I picked the Covey quote that I did was very carefully chosen. A vision says where we want to be versus where we are today. We need to be able to see movement from where we are today to where we're going with this vision. As we go through this, we, I want to be able to go through phrase by phrase and saying, how would we measure it? How would we know when we have achieved the vision? And if the words that we end up with or propose are not measurable in some way, shape, or form, then there's no way to know when we've gotten there. So therefore, you know, it's just a whole bunch of pretty words in a vision statement. It has to be something that we can actually take those words and create a goal from them that we can actually see progress on. So that's number one. Number two, to the comments about the words not being understood in terms of educational debt and Portrait of a Learner. On Portrait of a Learner, I agree with you. We've got this thing called a Portrait of a Learner. If it's not something the board wants to put in its vision to have our kids do and be, then I would recommend to the superintendent that we eliminate it. Why do we have it? If we, as a board, don't embrace it and saying, that's what we want our kids to be, or, and if it's just the Portrait of a Learner, I mean, the reason why we use Portrait of a Learner, it was shorthand for all these attributes, these values that we want the kids to have. So either we take these words or a subset of them and put them into the vision, that's what we want our kids to be, and we can measure that, or we put Portrait of a Learner in. But if we don't put either, either some of the words or the title in, then, you know, we should tell our learning services to 86 the whole thing because it doesn't mean anything anymore, because it's not something coming from the board that we want our kids to be. On educational debt, that term has evolved. It, you know, in the Every Student Succeeds Act, it was passed by the US House and Senate and signed by the President in 2015. It says achievement gap. And the State Board of Education, their top 10 plan says achievement gap. But we have been taught by Margaret and by Pat that that is deficit thinking. So therefore, because there are three phrases that I've heard in education, achievement gap, opportunity gap, and Pat gave us educational debt. So I put in there, in my original vision, educational debt because that's what our superintendent wanted it to be. If that's not clear, well, that's what the superintendent provided us in his write-up saying he liked that term. So if we, I want that phrase in there, but if it's not educational debt, then maybe opportunity gap or achievement gap. But what we need to say as a board is the differences between the different demographic groups in this district is not what we want. We want to have all students being successful and achieving. And this clearly says to eliminate that, those differences. If, if the term of art is not educational debt, I'd be perfectly happy in saying opportunity gap or even, heaven forbid, achievement gap. But we've been told by Margaret that that's not good terminology. But to throw the baby out with the bathwater, to say, because the term educational debt, which we got from the superintendent, is not understandable, then you're, it's not, it's not right. We should have it in one way, shape, or form. And I'm flexible on the wording, but the concept needs to be there.
All right. I'll come back to you again if need be. Thank you, Howard. Jennifer?
Yeah, similar. I struggle with this because if, if we take out all the meat, it's just a bunch of pretty words that we in no way can figure out if we've been successful. Sure, will parents not understand what Portrait of a Learner and educational debt are? Yes. But for me, anyway, I, all I care about is that the teachers and our staff wraps their head, and they will know what these mean because they're the boots on the ground. They're the ones executing the vision every class day.
You can take the Portrait of a Learner, and you can have a hot link.
Howard?
Thank you.
Howard, hold on. I'll come back to you.
Yellow flag.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, yes, I'm in favor, I'm still in favor of Portrait of a Learner. I'm still in favor of some flavor of educational debt because we have embraced that as something critical to our core values. And I strongly recommend keeping academic success. Does it, does it mean different things to different people? Sure. But I think every one of our educators has a quasi-objective sense of what academic success means, even if it's just achieving the state standards of learning, right? From year to year. And I think it's, I think it's specific, and I think it is somewhat measurable. And I think for that reason, it has to, that kind of language has to stay there or else we will never know if we've done this district any favors or not by writing a vision statement. That's, that's what I think.
Thank you, Jennifer. Pat, you can go now if you prefer to defer to Michelle. I'll come to you after Michelle.
I'll go after Michelle. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Michelle?
Okay, Pat, can I defer back to you? No, I'm just kidding.
Yes. Oh, okay. If you want to, that's not a problem.
No, I'm only kidding with you, Pat, just to add a little bit of excitement. So in number one, I don't know if it's line two, I think it's line two if I'm not mistaken. I was not sure about the very end of where it talks about right and wrong, so that was probably what I would probably, you know, have an issue with, the fact that it talks about rights. At the very last statement, I think it was Paul who liked making, making confidence to make choices. And so I think that that part was, is definitely in that one. So other than that, in number, line number six, that one has a lot of things crossed out already. So I'm not going to belabor that one. I think we've talked about that one at length. And the very, line number nine, on this one, didn't have any additions. And the new number 11, I don't really know. That one's still probably a last for me. But I do like some components of it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, Pat, your turn.
I'm sorry, could I add one tiny thing? I also say, I looked up some synonyms while we were chatting. If we keep the phrase unlimited possibilities, I would just recommend we change it to vast possibilities to just qualify it just a wee bit, and you're back into, back into, well, it has to be aligned with reality. Are you making fun of me, Howard?
No.
Given I can't see you, I don't know if somebody's jumping in until you speak. So I just did the edit in the third one.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. And Howard, point of order, I let Jennifer speak, but would you be willing to hold until after Pat has an opportunity to share?
Given I have yellow flagged myself, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Pat.
So I definitely think the shorter the better. And I also think it's really important that after you share it, it doesn't require an explanation. If it requires an explanation, it hasn't hit its point. They give some of the best marketing slogans of all time, and you simply know it's short. And I'll give you an example. Where's Beef? Right? If you're my age, you know exactly what she looks like, and you know what product she's peddling. You've done that. So I wonder if maybe a term like globally ready is something that might more appropriately fit. To the average person, they know that their child has to compete in a global society. One of my former students runs a hedge fund out of New York but lives in Hong Kong. Like, that blows my mind. When we sat here in August, we were trying to figure out, how are we going to get things back in, our school back in with COVID? Well, South Korea's ahead of us, Japan's ahead of us, Denmark's ahead of us. You know, we created this global consortium. Canada was there, right? So we had this global consortium of people we reached out to. My daughter, about two weeks ago, was talking to a young man from Australia on Snapchat. Excuse me, what? How do you, we must, how do you, okay, right? Showing my age, like, okay, so you have a friend from Aus, they need to be globally ready. What does that mean? That means they need to have skills. That speaks to educational debt. That means they need to have the dispositions of the Portrait of a Learner. It can mean so much more internally, but to the average person, globally ready? Okay, yeah, they have to compete in a global society. I get that. It's the big picture. But then internally, we define with LST, what does that look like? What does that feel like? What does that sound like within our buildings, within our staff, within our messaging to the community? Thank you.
Michelle, may I try to see if I can find a compromise on this?
Sure. Give it a whirl, and then we'll go back around. Since I did ask you to hold till after, Pat, I'll let you go ahead, Howard, and then we'll go back around again. So what's your thought on a compromise? And, oh, let me just say, Pat, I didn't know where to put globally ready into the document yet, but it's on my notepad for right now. Is there a spot, Pat, you could see it fitting in? Or I can just throw it in a line below if you'd like?
So the bottom one, to provide all students with unlimited possibilities for the future, and to be globally ready? I don't know, I need to think about how I would wordsmith a little bit. But I would add it to the last one, and shorten the last one because globally ready could encompass so many things we're looking at.
How about, how about, Pat, instead of connected to others, what about globally connected? That they are valued and globally connected?
I'll put it there for now, Lisa, just to sort of grab the thinking, and then we can come back to it.
Because globally ready for what? But globally connected, I, I don't know. Maybe that's better.
Okay. I got it in there in two places. We'll come back to it. Howard, your turn.
Thank you. I think we just have, and this is at a 40,000-foot level, we have two competing concepts about what a vision statement should be and be used for. I'm using it from the MASB Governance Standards Terms, that it says that we commit to a vision, and the vision then is used to set the goals and then to set the accountability standards for the, for the district. But I'm also hearing that it needs to be a slogan. And the elevator speech and another term would be a bumper sticker. And I see those two possibly, not possibly, are conflicting. And we're going back and forth on, on, you know, is it too simplistic? Is it easy to understand for the person who is not familiar with education? But there, that's not going to be useful then going through the organization in the, in the strategic plan, going down to MICIP. Can we find maybe that we end up with, or not end up, but we develop a vision statement which then has a slogan on top of it, which gives you the slogan that we can put on a bumper sticker and, and maybe we don't use it as a slogan, the term slogan, but we have some other terminology where we have something that's really easy for the public to understand. other terminology where we have something that's really easy for the public to understand. But then we have a vision statement beneath that which then gives us the things that we need for MASB and the strategic plan in MYKIP to really fully flesh out what we want that MYKIP system to do. If we can do both, instead of trying to argue back and forth and say, take this out and put that back in, I don't think we're going to come to an agreement. But if we come up with a slogan and maybe we can look at other districts around the country, maybe they have a slogan. And then, I think at work, we used to say a quality first or something like that, but that's not what's used in the strategic plan that really tells the troops through the organization what we want our students to be. So, that's my compromise, is can we do both? Can we have that slogan, which everyone seems to want, but at the same time have a vision statement that is measurable? Maybe the slogan's not measurable, but the vision statement needs to be measurable because otherwise we'll never know when we get there.
Thanks, Howard. Given it's, yeah, who was that? I just heard a voice.
Michelle, it's Pat.
Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to use my phone referend option and ask Todd Biglak to share a little bit about globally ready and maybe some wordsmithing with that, just for consideration.
Are you phoning him now?
Yes, he's here.
Todd's in the building. Todd's in the building.
Thank you, I love it. It suddenly feels like a game show. I was down the hall doing a little bit of work and heard the conversation, yes.
I can name that three words.
And I really have to appreciate, I love the discourse around the Portrait of a Learner. And hopefully, hopefully I can make an offering and it's completely okay if you don't take it. It is okay to think of the Portrait of a Learner to be a goal that's achievable to meet the vision or to strive towards the vision of the district. So, like, and those, the Portrait of a Learner is heavily influenced through the philosophies of global competency. So, if you looked at that vision and you wanted to put in like a global readiness, in fact, I brought, I happen to have a couple of the extra anchor documents that we used during strategic planning that carved out some of that language as well as lifted up the Portrait of a Learner a little bit. So, if you looked at that last one, perhaps it says to provide all students or to ensure that all students are globally ready, that would provide the confidence to navigate their world and make choices that are right for them and then still bring in those pieces. And then what we would do, because the Portrait of a Learner right now is the strategic goal number one. So, the vision would be umbrellaing that goal statement along with other goal statements. So, I just wanted to reassure you that it wouldn't get lost, but I would encourage if the Portrait of a Learner isn't in there, you might want to go for something that is globally ready, you know, and especially over the last 15 months, we can see that, you know, an impact anywhere in the world impacts all of us. So, that's a little bit about what those global competencies are about. I'll leave a couple of these if you want to pass it around. This is where some of that language came from.
Thank you, Todd.
And Pat, Pat, could you assure that whatever Todd is sharing, somebody could either scan to me or email me a copy so that when I'm doing the work with the board, I'm aware of what they have seen?
Yes, I'll ask Rebecca to send you a copy. Thank you.
All right, great, thanks.
So, Michelle, it's Paul, just to jump in. I know Siva had his hand up. We're at 8:59. Just giving you a time check.
Yeah, here's what I'd like to do. We're right in the midst of the deep part of the conversation. If it's okay with you and people can keep their last second comments very short, my recommendation would be that we pick this up again, do some reworking behind the scenes, and I could get that out to you as homework so that we meet together the next time. And I think that may be happening in July, but I'm not 100% sure on the next meeting date.
The sooner the better.
So, we have to keep the conversation short finishing up in order to let you live into your timeframe. But Paul, I would defer to you as to whether or not you'd like to go around one more time or just stop here.
Yeah, I mean, we can go around one more time. I'm just, I was just doing a time check. We can go around one more time and then we could have that follow-up meeting. And Siva had his, Siva had his hand up because I know you can't see us.
Sure. And I'm the first in the round anyway. All right. So, Michelle, I'm back to the third item on row nine. And to Howard's point, I think we can pick and choose elements which incorporate both something which can be a punchline as well as appeal to, let's say, a specialist in the district or staff in the district. So, as I look at the third one, here's what I do like and here's what I think should come first, right? There's four pieces in that section. There's through an inclusive system, support the whole child, inspire critical thinking and lifelong learning, and then empower every child, student to achieve their goals. So, I think in terms of a punchline, right? If you put the phrase inspire critical thinking and lifelong learning first, right? And so, it could read like this. Inspire critical thinking and lifelong learning through an inclusive system that supports the whole child. I think we could consider taking out possibilities for the future. Through an inclusive system that supports the whole child and student, BHS will empower every child to achieve and reach their goals. But I thought putting the words inspire critical thinking and lifelong learning first, it makes it more action-oriented.
The word inspire-
I'm going to move. Howard, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to hang on because we're under a shortened timer, so keep your note. I am going to come to you, but just keep a note there off to the side if you would-
I just want to try to see if we can have some dialogue instead of just going around and around.
I know you do, but I'm trying to live into your timeframe, so I want to give everyone a last second chance to give a final thought because we have to end it for today. We won't come to closure today. The dialogue is really important, but I don't want to have, people not have a turn because you've got another agenda item. So, if you would please jot it down and roll with me.
I've got it, I'm writing.
Dialogue is critical. Thank you, I appreciate it. Siva, would you like me to jot that down now? Or, I did get the order, I could add it after everybody has a chance to share if that is okay with you.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm done, Michelle. Thank you. I've got it down, noted down as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. John, go ahead one last time.
I did like what Todd said. And what I liked was the way the last one starts to provide. He said to ensure, and I guess, I like that verb there. And I think he followed it with that all students are globally ready. And then, I know I'm changing things around here, this is just, so, instead of providing students with unlimited possibilities, I changed the word, and this could be wordsmith, but expose to vast possibilities so that, like, instead of we're giving them the possibilities for their future, we're exposing them to, maybe not unlimited, but vast or some other adjective, of the possibilities for their future. And then, I like the confidence, I still like the confidence to make choices. And I'm fine with eliminating that are right for them. I think that's implied by the confidence to make the choice. And that's as far as I got, so.
Oh, I put it in the one above it. You were thinking about the final one, so let me change it.
Right, yeah, I was trying to rework, use the framework of the one that we liked from last week and the kind of some of the wording from that one with kind of this global thing, which I also like, so. I don't know. I'm not going to make a choice. Obviously, it's difficult. If I could think of anything, I'll shoot an email out to you and the group in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. We're not going to decide tonight, so we're just getting last minute comments in here before we wrap up. Okay, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, so, following up what Pat said, I pulled IKEA's vision statement, create a better everyday life for many people. Nike, bring inspiration and innovation to every athlete in the world. McDonald's, be the best quick service restaurant in the world. I'll do one more. Amazon, our vision is to be the earth's most customer-centric company to build a place where people can come to find and discover anything they may want to buy online. Again, simple, I don't think it's, you're not, there's no measurables there. I think, again, if we said whatever we want to word tweak, but going back to, you know, BHS will power every child to achieve and reach their own goals, I think that's self-explanatory. I don't think there's measurables in a vision, my opinion. And again, to the point, if I'm talking to someone, I say some vision to someone, educational debt, Portrait of a Learner, no offense, people like that and they're like, they don't know what they're talking about, it doesn't mean anything, you know? And then I'm like, well, see, explanation six, you know, I'm just, it's just got to be quick, simple, and that's it. That's just my thought, wherever we go.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, I underlined that just to hang on to it in the third one now, still capturing your kind of emphasis on that. Thank you, Lisa.
Well, I also agree that it should be, in my opinion, short, memorable. I don't think we have to pick apart the technical measurable parts of it because it is the umbrella. We have measurables way further down. We have a strategic plan with goals and then further down from that, we have specific targets. I don't think the vision is the place for it. I do think that it should be the kind of thing that's embraced by our community, whether you've got children in school or not. It should be the kind of thing that makes you smile so you remember it. It should be simple. It should make you feel good and it should definitely be connected to kids. So, to me, I don't, I mean, Paul shortened it even more and that's fine. I like the idea of unlimited possibilities, maybe we introduce or present, because I like it to be a verb. Because to me, that might be the characteristic that speaks to Bloomfield. And I think in this day and age, it is all about, I mean, if we learned anything from the pandemic, it's all about choices and being flexible. So, at the end of it, I don't really want us to have a vision that's so technical that it's lost the humanity and the part that everyone can wrap their emotions around. We can do that later on, I mean, further down the road. We just can't contradict it with the vision, but be general, something people can remember and smile about, I think. Anyway, I suppose, not a huge fan of the globally ready or globally connected because it does muddy the water and I don't really know what that means. So, to me, again, we're introducing a term of art that might mean different things to different people. But if we could find a way to shorten it even further, I like the ones that Paul read, they're simple and they are ones that you can embrace. So, by the way, infinite possibilities to me doesn't speak to my kids. My kids don't have infinite possibilities because they aren't going to play in the NBA, but our students collectively do, to me, anyway.
Thank you, Lisa. Howard, and then Jennifer.
Okay, folks, I tried to get a compromise so we can all agree. We don't seem to be wanting to do that. We just approved the MASB Governance Standards, seven to zero. Governance standards say, vision. A vision describes in detail the desired future state of the district. We desire to be somewhere in the future. Therefore, it's measurable. In the, in the actual elements of the standards, it says, one of them says, does the Board of Education proactively address barriers to implementing the vision? So, we want to get there and there's something in the way, so it's our job to get over or around or through whatever that barrier is to get to that desired state. Having a bumper sticker, having a slogan is great. But I think we need two things. We need to do something that does what you guys want, which is something that's short, pithy, easy to understand for the public, that's great. But we need something to go between that and the goals so it gives us and our predecessors some idea of how to craft those goals to meet that future state vision. We can't be sitting here and just going directly from the kind of pretty word, you know, infinite possibilities. I mean, how in the world do you measure infinite? What's the metric of instrument infinite possibilities? I don't know. But, so, if we can try to do both, maybe we kind of massage what MASB has here. They have, they just talk about vision, 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 that we're visioned. Here, we're vision, they say here, one of the key, the guiding principles is being If it's just this bumper sticker, how are we actually going to drive? How does that direct our efforts in what we do and what we tell the superintendent to do?
Howard, if since you're debating-
Howard, I'm-
I'm going to debate. That's what the mission statement's for.
No, no, that's not what a mission statement is for. A mission statement is the fact of what they do, but it's not, it's not an action. The vision is the action.
Just do it is a logo, Howard.
Yeah.
And a vision statement, right? So, it's a halo effect. Just hold off for a minute and look at MASB, right? So, we're talking-
Thank you, Howard.
And so, my point is, if you look at the vision statements, going back to even a couple of sessions ago that Michelle had, where she had the vision statements for multiple districts that she had shared, almost none of them had the level of detail that you're talking about, right? They were broad themes that you want as a long-term goal. You use the mission statement to look at those long-term goals, high-level goals, and make them more definite so you can then address it in your strategic plan.
But that's not what Michelle says. That's not her definition of a vision, of a mission statement. Look at, look at Michelle's definition of a mission statement versus vision.
Howard, you have a yellow flag up.
So, Howard, just so you know, I agree with every word that Siva said. I think one of the things to think about is your vision is what you want to be in the future, but it doesn't eliminate some of the things he shared. I also want to make sure that if we're going to go into full debate here, that we're honorable to everybody having a chance to do that.
I'm sorry.
No, I understand and I wanted Siva to have a chance to share. Howard, it sounded like when you were sharing, it was more of a convincing, wanting people to be convinced that the approach you're taking is the right and proper one. There are lots of points of view at this point. We need to get to consensus at some point, but it's not going to be tonight and trying to convince people in a short, necessarily going to move us there either.
Correct.
So, I do, I do want to have everybody have their last minute thoughts on what's on the screen as opposed to trying to convince us to solve it tonight in any way. I am, as a facility, really looking forward to the meeting we can have where we can have dialogue and not be constrained by videotaping and all the other stuff. There's opportunities for great dialogue in that way. But Howard, if there's nothing else to share and Siva, if there's nothing else to share, I'd like to move to chat.
I'm done.
Michelle?
Thank you, yes.
Your mic is really choppy on our end. I don't know if anyone's still here that can help with that.
No, we're all here and we just figured there's nothing we can do, so.
I'm struggling over here. So, I think now is a pretty good time to wrap it up. But otherwise, keep your words short because it's really like, blah, 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 blah.
It's Charlie Brown, so let's go to Jennifer and Charles and Pat.
It's, yeah, your voice is coming over, it's staccato.
Yeah, a lot like the, was it the teacher? Yeah, a lot like the, was it the teacher?
It's Charlie Brown.
I'm all set.
Thank you. Jennifer, and Michelle and Pat, and no more dialogue. Go ahead.
No, I don't know. I mean, I'm getting dizzy. I see the merits of both arguments. I'm also fine philosophically with taking Howard and MASB's idea of a vision statement and putting it in a mission statement. I mean, that's just semantics to me. I would, as I've said before, I would like to see something that lends itself to evaluation in this language because otherwise it really ends up being words on a paper. And I, and I do agree, it'd be nice, I always wanted to have a separate slogan, a slogan separate from mission and vision. We are the district that, you know, fill in the blank. So I agree with Howard, I agree with you, Howard, on that, but also it gets very laborious, right? How many, how many different documents do we have? I've given up on portrait of a learner, not given up, but Todd reminded me, it's in the leading statement of Goal Area One of the strategic plan, so great, it's alive there, so good. And yeah, the rest of it, I don't want to have a big fight about this, I just want to get it done.
Michelle? Well, I think I have the Wi-Fi because you're not Charlie Brown on this end, so.
We're all going to have a seizure.
Michelle, it's happening to you too, so it's, maybe it's the first name. What a first name is. I don't know.
Perhaps maybe, I also don't want to labor either, you know, of course, but number, I still am probably leaning more toward some of the visions than number nine, Riffick's boundary, number one on the board, but with the changes that were removed out from the other ones. So I'm trying to figure out if we removed unlimited and made that vast to reflect the changes that Jennifer suggested. And then I think that would raise a little, raise the best chance we have of the rest of them. I'm still not necessarily convinced that new number 11 unless you removed. Let's see, maybe change a limit in that one too, but the right, what's right for them still for me not working.
As long as Michelle can hear.
If you take what was John suggested would be exposure or were you ensuring? I'm not really remembering. I like exposure, not ensure. So that was, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. And Pat, would you like to close this off with last comment? And then I will organize the various sundry contributions into the homework.
This is a tiny thing.
Sorry, I have one more, sorry. For their futures, I think that's understood because it's a vision. That's the other thing, nobody lasts number 11. Thank you, Charlie, for that. Okay, go ahead, Pat.
I'm sorry, I forgot one. Tiny thing, this is just a wordsmith thing. To your point, Siva, I like your little rearrangement, but I wouldn't, I don't like the word inspires. You don't inspire critical thinking, you teach it, you, you train it. I don't know that you inspire lifelong learning. I think you teach people how to be independent learners. So anyway, if we keep that clause, I want to see a different verb in there than, than inspires, that's all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, Pat, wrap this up for the night and ask for the comments homework.
No additional comments at this time. Thank you.
Look how easily we ended that.
I take this as. All right, can I say something about the last item? We, we may have to postpone it. This is really excruciating to hear.
I was about to say that, not, not because of Michelle Harmala, because the last presentation is going to be Michelle Southward. And then I don't think we, we're at a point.
Yeah, Michelle, we can't hear.
Michelle, we can't, we can't hear, we can't hear you anymore. It's, I don't know, the technology.
Michelle, we can't hear you at all.
We could just blame Dave, but.
No, we're not going to do that.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow. Yeah, so, 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 Michelle, we'll have to, if it's okay with you, Michelle, Michelle Southward, by Michelle Harmala. Once Michelle drops off, I can always say Michelle once. Michelle, maybe we could delay Goal Five to the next meeting just because we're having a hard time hearing you from, you know, from your microphone.
That's okay. I think, um, Jennifer, is your mic right there? And so what do you think? Are you good with it?
Oh, it's Siva. Who was on the, it was you, Siva?
Siva and Lisa.
And Lisa.
I'm okay with it, Michelle, because it's really hard to hear you, and even the translation verbally, it does nothing close to what I know you're saying, so I can't follow any of it.
Yeah, the closed captioning almost swore at us.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I swear to you, but I'm good with it.
Okay, all right. So with that, I will call for adjourn, that's all I'm agenda, right? I forgot what the agenda is. I'll call for adjournment.
Sorry, Michelle.
Sorry, Michelle.
It's really, it's really bad, like we're all about to drop and have a seizure. Or else we would not have cut you short.
Thanks, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Was that, so, yeah, do we know what that?